Dooley impressed.
Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Hour is six o'clock, and as Mayor, I hereby call to order this special meeting of Laconia City Council scheduled for Monday, June 5, 2017, at this hour. And we're going to dispense tonight, since this is a special meeting, with a lot of the things we do at the top of our normal meetings, but we will start tonight with a salute to our American flag, and I'd ask you that you please stand and join Counselor Bounds in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will note for the record that the minutes to tonight's special meeting are being kept by City Clerk Mary Reynolds, and I will note for the record that five of six city councilors are present tonight, only Counselor Hamel is missing, and therefore a quorum has been established for this meeting. We're also joined at the head table tonight by City Manager Scott Myers and by the Finance Director Donna Woodman. Primary purpose of this special meeting, as you all know, is to discuss and hear presentations on various aspects of the proposed fiscal year 2018 budget, and tonight we have presentations scheduled by several different department heads, but before we get to that, we have one important business to take care of. At our last meeting, we were requested to approve the cost items associated with a tentative five-year contract agreement between the Laconia School Board and Laconia Education Association. Counselors will remember, at that meeting, we tabled that initiative, so what we need to do tonight to start the discussion is to pass a motion to take that item off the table. Okay, we have a motion, take it off the table, made by Counselor Doyle, seconded by Counselor Bounds. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye, or raise your hand, I'm sorry. Five votes affirmative. Okay, that item is now back on the agenda again and ready for action, and the first thing I'm going to do, as we did last time, is recognize School Board Member Mike Pearson.
Good evening, councilors, City Manager. Since the last city council meeting, as many of you know, we have had two different work sessions between members of the council and members of the School Board. At the first of those meetings, Counselor Lippman had presented a concept for the formation or the establishment of a stabilization fund for the educational requirements, four dollars that would be flowing in to fund the contract that you're going to consider this evening. At the second meeting that we had had, we had discussed and formalized a memorandum of understanding that would outline how that would all work. I'm assuming that all of the councilors have had an opportunity to review that. Is that yes?
No. We all have it, yes.
Okay. So, the other thing that had occurred over the course of the past two weeks, last Thursday, we convened with meetings with, excuse me, with the negotiating team from the Laconia Education Association, and we came to an agreement on a modification or an amendment to the termination provision. The original termination provision of the contract, which is not a cost item that you're going to be approving, but is something that was of concern to members of the council, that provision required that there be a referendum passed as a contingency to the contract remaining in force. During the meeting that we held last week, both the union and the School Board agreed that we would remove that provision, and given what we had for the draft memorandum of understanding and the wording of what that would be called if you were to approve that, what we did was that we came to a tentative agreement with the union to amend the contract, to eliminate that contingency language from the contract, and to basically allow the School Board to terminate the contract in any year in which the amounts allowable under the tax cap, plus amounts that would be added to that amount from the stabilization fund, did not exceed $850,000. We all met last Friday, the council and the School Board, we discussed that, and I think that that brings us to where we are today.
Hey, I don't have any questions of Mr. Pearson at this point. You have a question or a statement?
I guess I'd categorize it more as a statement, and then I have a question.
Okay, so, we had three members of City Council, those of you who recall, who were on that subcommittee that met with School Board representation. In addition to Counselor Lippman, there was Counselor Bounds and Counselor Baer.
Counselor Doyle.
Counselor Doyle.
Sorry, Counselor Doyle. So, now would be the appropriate time for, I'll start with Counselor Lippman, for any of the three of you to weigh in from the council's perspective as well here, in addition to asking Mr. Pearson any questions, if you have them. Counselor Lippman.
So, and more for the benefit of people who didn't participate, just a few points I'd like to make on the agreement understanding. In terms of the sort of the first paragraph, it's a very short document, it's about six paragraphs, but the first paragraph puts it in the context of the city charter with respect to budgeting. Second paragraph talks about the 850,000, I think, as we can understand, it's 850,000, not a total of 180,000, 150,000 is the difference between what the tax cap would provide in any given year and 850,000, so if, and we looked at a schedule of different inflation rates and building additions, so, you know, there's a range of outcomes that could mean that there'd be no additional money at the inflation rate and the additions by new construction, and that the amount that the council would be considering here is putting a half a million dollars for one-time money into, for a one-time contribution to a reserve account of a half a million dollars, and that those monies would come from upcoming sales of surplus property, and those, one of those sales has no contingencies on it, and the other one, we still expect to close, so in terms of where the 500,000 would come from, that's where we would, where I think the recommendation or the consensus was. And then, also, there's a provision in there that discusses what would happen if inflation rate provided more than the 850. We put a threshold, if the tax cap produced a million, over a million dollars, that the sum above a million dollars would be added to the reserve fund, the education stabilization fund. Those amounts that were put in by school contributions would be available at a future time. If all of the half million that the city contributes is not consumed over the five-year period, then that money would revert back to the city's fund balance. And, you know, as would be the case with any agreement, you know, a council, this is a good faith understanding between the parties, that changes in School Board or changes in council could change this in the future, so those were the major points at which I believe we had a consensus around. Hopefully, that's somewhat helpful to those who didn't participate. I don't know if I left anything out, Ava or Brenda.
So, this is the so-called memorandum of understanding?
Yes.
Now, are, is it, is it separate from and independent of the funding of this contract, which is what's before us tonight? Are we going to be asked to approve?
This would be, this would be the means to which, how the contract would be proposed to be funded, so in terms of the cost item that we'd be voting on, and I'll look for some procedural clarification on how we technically can consider the vote, I think based on the letter of understanding, the monies that are proposed in the contract with this revised language are sufficient that if you were in favor of the contract, you could vote for it, that the funding would be there.
Well, my question is, do we need to formalize the memorandum, we, the council, do we need to formalize the memorandum of understanding by adopting it from our standpoint officially and having the School Board do the same on their end?
I think that that would be appropriate, that was going to be, when you talked about a question, is how do we, do we need this to be signed off by given parties?
Have you given that any thought from the School Board perspective?
No, I have not, although looking at it...
All we're voting on tonight in terms of officially is funding the contract?
Correct. Well...
The cost items.
Approving the cost items.
Yep.
The way that I envisioned this working was that the memorandum of understanding would be a subject of discussion at our budget presentation next Monday, and that we could then move to get that memorandum of understanding approved by the School Board at our next regular meeting, which would be a week from next Monday, or, excuse me, a week from next Tuesday.
Okay, well, we have agreement in principle as to the items that are in...
Yes, we do.
Both the School Board's part and the, or the School Board representative's part that were involved, and the three city councilors that were involved.
Yeah, so the memorandum was drafted by city manager, provided to the School Board. I think you consulted with council and, or did a review of yourself, so I think we're comfortable with the, with the concepts that are here.
So, are you comfortable with the idea of approving this as part of the budget process in the memorandum of understanding?
I am on the basis that, you know, if there was not good faith on the parties, we, the council still has the vote on the budget subsequently, so.
Counselor Bounds.
What do we do with the language that's in the contract now relating to the tax cap and all of that stuff?
That has all been eliminated by virtue of the amendment that's been agreed upon by the, by the School Board and the LEA.
And again, we're not, that's not part of our deliberations.
I understand that.
Because that's not a so-called cost item. We're being made aware of that's been changed in the agreement between the School Board and the Teachers Union, but it's not up to us to approve that change, because it's not a cost item. They're just letting us know that they have done that. So, if and when tonight we approve the funding, the cost mechanism for the contract, we are, they're letting us know that that provision in the contract has now been changed.
Okay, so this amendment has been approved by both the School Board and the Teachers.
The School Board held the special meeting at five o'clock this evening and approved it, and it's my understanding that the, that the LEA did the same this afternoon.
Yeah. It's got the memorandum of understanding under it. Okay, great job, everybody.
Counselor Doyle, do you have anything to add?
Nothing other than that I'm in favor of this, I'm in favor of supporting this. The reasons being that I think we need to bring the teachers up to parity with the other areas, and if we don't make a step like this, I don't know how it's going to happen. We'll just get further and further behind.
Any other questions for Mr. Pearson?
The manager might, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, I just think based on a vote tonight of the contract, if it is approved tonight, then we would want to, again, at least formally acknowledge that this is a letter of understanding, and I would do that at the, at the next meeting for you. But I think it's great to talk about how they work hand in hand tonight.
Because you all are due back at the next meeting.
Correct. We will be presenting our budget on the 12th, as I understand it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, a motion would be in order to have the city council approve the cost items relative to a tentative five-year agreement covering fiscal years 2018 through fiscal year 2022 between the Laconia Education Association and the Laconia School Board as presented.
Go ahead.
By Counselor Bounds, sir, a second. Counselor Doyle, seconded that motion, all right. We're back to the council now for a discussion. Any discussion?
So, everybody on the, on that committee is in agreement to what you came up with?
It sounds like it.
No.
I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood your question.
I asked if the committee that was there, the three councilors, were in agreement to this contract.
In terms of the fund, let Counselor Baer speak first.
I oppose this, and...
I thought he was referring to the people on the committee.
I'm on the committee.
She and Counselor...
Okay, I'm sorry.
I oppose it merely because I don't see how we can possibly pass a contract with this kind of money in it, when we haven't passed the budget, we haven't seen a school budget, and I think for us to go ahead and do something of this size should wait until it comes before us in the budget process.
I think that the date of the approval of the contract, because of the way it was presented, clocks tomorrow, so we need to do something tonight.
I don't vote on hypotheses.
Counselor Lippman.
So, again, mostly for the benefit of those that weren't there, so I think it, to my understanding, we're going to see a budget come from the School Board that is going to be tax cap compliant, and that the, there would be potentially a draw upon some of those funds to implement the first year of the contract. The, the monies that we're proposing to put into the school stabilization reserve fund are one-time monies that are going to be contributed on a one-time basis, which otherwise did not have a specific purpose. I mean, certainly, the city has needs and future needs that we haven't anticipated, but I think, as Counselor Doyle mentioned, I think the long-run issue is if we don't address the turnover issue, it becomes more expensive to deal with, and so I think Counselor Baer has legitimate concerns, but I do think ultimately we get to approve the budget, and if there isn't, if you will, following of the agreement, which I expect based on the deliberations, we still have a final vote on the budget. So, I think the council and the cities are protected, and I think based on the interactions from a good faith standpoint, I expect everything to fall into place where we'll be able to address the funding of this without unnecessarily taking away from other parts of the city that need to be addressed as well, be they public safety, fire, so on. You know, we've done, this is the 12th or 13th budget that we've worked on, I have confidence that we can do this and also stay in compliance with the, with the tax cap provisions of the charter. That's why I'm in favor.
You have your look dead at Scott?
I have, Counselor, I've been actively involved with both the school administration and both meetings, so I'm comfortable with what's laid out here. As far as the mechanism, it's very doable.
You know, and as far as the Counselor Baer's point is concerned, my understanding is, again, relative to the detail of the contract, that's not officially part of our business, is that should the, at the end of our budget deliberations this year, should our budget not include at least $850,000?
Not 850, it's, where we understand the budget to come in, it's, I believe, 137 or 173, I'm not sure which it is, remembering correctly. Mike, is it 137 or 173 that...
No.
137.
But, I think to answer where Mayor Angler was going, you know, yes, it will need to be a total of 850, which would include, which would include the 508 and the 137, which would come in below that. What we're representing to you is that we are not going to terminate the contract if we, if that is what we're going to be getting this year. The contract does require that we, that we have the ability to terminate in any year in which we get less than $850,000. This year, with the, with the budget cuts that we're proposing and that we've circulated...
So, you've already, you've already said as a board that you will not exercise that option this year?
Exactly, no, we will not exercise that right this year, if, and we understand that we will be getting less than 850,000 this year, simply because, you know, we don't want to exhaust this fund in year one, and we think that it's prudent to take as little as possible so that we have more of that money in that fund to fund future years, because the most important years are years three to five in this contract, as I've told the council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor, please raise a hand. All those against, please raise a hand. We have four votes affirmative, one vote negative, motion carries. Thank you all for being here tonight. Okay, as far as budget review is concerned, first off, we're going to take Parks, Recreation and Facilities. Mr. Dunleavy.
Kevin Dunleavy, Director of Recreation and Facilities. I come before you tonight to present the operating budget for the Parks and Facilities. I'll start by directing you to page 111 of your budget book. And I won't run through each specific line item individually, typically what I'd like to do is just identify some of the changes that I'm requesting in the budget. This first page that you see is for Recreation Facilities, which is essentially the Parks and Rec component. There are other components in my budget that are more geared towards individual facilities like the Police Department Maintenance, Community Center Maintenance, so on. And I'll start with the salaries category. Any changes in this category that are reflected are contractual in nature or merit increases, and that total salaries item at this time is projected to increase or request to increase by $11,000. One of the items I'll bring, I'll make note of, in case anyone noticed, we are requesting $6,000 in our overtime budget. We did have some higher overtime costs last year. A lot of that is driven by snow removal, depending on timing of storms, similar what Parks and Rec, similar what Public Works is faced with, and additionally, I've had to rely on overtime, I think, at times when staffing is low or seasonal help isn't, we've had problems getting seasonal help at certain times, and we just feel like we need to devote staff to some overtime costs to just get things done, particularly before holidays and at peak times or during peak events. So, that item you see, but I'm still requesting the same amount that I would typically request, but that item was, did show an actual increase in the 1516, and I, it also, this current fiscal year that we're in, I'm also over that 6,000 number, but my plan is to hope to get that back down with, with a fully staffed seasonal staff. Moving on to other individual items that are changing, there's a small reduction in fuel from 10,000 to 9,000, a increase in the Supplies Office, and that's, that's in order to account for a purchase of a desktop computer. The Maintenance Park House item is, the request is down from 10,500 to 6,000, and that is due to a one-time increase for repairs to a walkway up at the Weers Community Park, which we will, we have not completed, but funding is available to do that, and we'll accomplish that in the next fiscal year. So, I'd like to direct you to the total line for the other category. The totals have, being requested, is decreased by $1,800, from 182,300 to 180,500. The last couple items are Vehicle Rentals and Internal Service Fund, and those are dictated by the use of our vehicles and how, how we fund, are able to fund purchase of new equipment. So, I'd like to just identify that our total increase for all these categories on this page is in the amount of $10,000, and the bulk of that, well, bulk of that is the salaries item.
Good job.
I have a question here from Counselor Lippman.
Yes.
On the fuel going down and the vehicle rental going up, what additional, that's going up quite, I mean, your overall budget, kudos in terms of the whole thing together, but just curious what's happening there to, over 1516 actual?
Right, and you're talking about the vehicle rental line?
The last, second to last line of page.
Yeah, I don't know if Donna, you could shed light on that? I mean, I don't know if that means we're using our vehicles more often, is essentially what I think it means, is that we track...
Well, you got a new tractor, and there's some expenses incurred with that.
Right.
Either way, what we'll do is, it's the combination of those two items between the actual cost of use of the vehicle as well as the depreciation.
Okay.
And that you have purchased several new vehicles.
Right. That's correct. Yeah, because we do have some, some new vehicles that are seeing significant use, like our large area mower, and all those hours are tracked for those vehicles.
Like to get that for my lawn before that...
Yeah, it would be nice, wouldn't it?
You also bought, in fiscal year 17, you were approved for a one-ton dump truck for 70,000, and then a 35,000 for, is that a tractor?
Uh, might be. It was 35,000 for the, a new dump truck, and then was 70,000 for a tractor.
I guess I have the descriptions reversed.
Yeah, I think you did on the bottom left, yeah.
Yes.
Counselor Lippman?
So, the Pocket Park, I guess you might describe it at where Busy Corner Store was, in terms of maintaining that and other new things that have been accomplished around the city, including the work in the Weers, in terms of being able to keep up with all that, with, you're confident you can do that?
Right, I will say this coming year, I, as time goes on and as we defer some, some projects in maintenance, it's going to be increasingly difficult to try to make ends meet or level fund things, for sure. I'm confident with what we've been able to do and the ability to tap into the non-capital reserve is... reserve has been helpful, although we try to avoid that when we can. If there's funds available in the operating budget to do small projects, we do that. As far as the Mandan Square or Busy Corner project, that was, that's funded through a donation from CVS, and then we'll use some of the, we'll use the bulk of the funds for the improvement of that, but use city staff for some of that work. We'll contract some of that work out, but, so I have a level of confidence, but again, it's getting increasingly more difficult, and, but as, if, with a non-capital reserve, I think when items come up or other projects happen that are significant, if that's, if we're able to continue to rely on that, that's been a big advantage for us in avoiding major operating costs, operating expenses out of our operating budget.
The additional, the additional Wild Trail, that's funded by the Wild Trail?
Right. Right, the maintenance fund, yes, yes, that will continue to be, and so we track our staff time. I don't go so much detail as far as fuel or equipment costs, it's just hard to track for what we do on those projects, but any major maintenance task, like if a fence breaks or, that's just an example, if there's a drainage washout, and, and staff, you know, what it costs for our staff to be there is all accounted for in the Wild Trail, through the Wild Trail Maintenance Fund.
Counselor Bullock?
That tractor, what was the price of that tractor?
We got a $70,000 for a new tractor.
What kind of a tractor is that?
Well, it's going to be, well, it's replacing our 1978 Ford tractor that has seen better days. We, it's going to be utilized on our athletic fields, it's going to be used to drag beaches.
Does it have other equipment?
Oh, yeah, it has attach, it has a backhoe attachment on it. It'll have a rototiller, which we're going to use for our walking trails where the grass starts to grow in on our walking trails, like at Levitt Park or Wyatt Park. And it has a bucket on the front, which is standard, and it'll have a snow, a snow push for us to be able to plow with it in the winter.
The mower attachment's quite impressive.
Yeah, yes.
What was else? There was another question now, and I forgot it. All right, it'll come to me, probably.
Okay, now I'd like to, go ahead.
You're going to change pages on us here?
Yes, yes, sorry. I'd like to direct you to page 116, and that's the Recreation Facilities, the City Hall Maintenance Budget. And there's just a handful of items on this, all related to utility costs and building maintenance. Again, tried to level fund items where I could. The first item is lights and power, which is also accounts for the air conditioning, requesting an increase of $2,500 there. Requesting an additional $1,000 in the maintenance building, which is really a kind of a catch-all for any maintenance that we need to do, whether it's a repair of the carpet or repair a door handle, various items like that. The total increase that we're looking at for this part of the budget is an increase in $3,500.
Counselor Bear?
Could I go back a minute, Kevin?
Yeah.
And go to the Robbie Mills situation?
Sure.
Is that progressing? Are our figures still in the same area?
As far as the water situation?
Yeah.
But, yeah, right now?
Are they working on it?
I received a, what I would call a short-term agreement from the state of New Hampshire today. I haven't had a chance, I have not had a chance to review it. It's a license for the, for us to access the property, drill wells, utilize the water tank. So I got that today. Guilford Well is still on hold until we have that license approved, and so I would say things are moving as, as fast as they can at this moment.
What are the muskrats doing now?
They're, yeah, we're relying on, we have portable toilets, unfortunately, we'll have to rely on those for now, so we have extra portable toilets that we brought up.
Who's paying for that?
The city is, we are. The, the field itself, I mean, Mother Nature's taking care of that for us, which is, I know we're all not happy to see the rain out there, but when I look out, it's actually given me a little relief in regards to that. So it's been able to buy us some time. So that's where, if that answers your question.
So does our lease with the muskrats call for us to bear that expense, since they're not paying any rent?
I don't remember the specific agreement to the lease, but I felt like the city, I think they were always under the assumption that the facility would have water available for them for bathrooms, so I certainly, you know, feel free to disagree, but I felt like the city's obligated to the muskrats to provide restroom facilities for them. I just felt like it was the appropriate thing to do, to provide portable toilets. The cost is, I'm probably going to be looking at about $200 a month for the portable toilets and for one month. I didn't look at that as being exorbitant.
Not worth arguing over.
Right.
Counselor Bullock?
Yes, just to go back to Busy Corner, I see the other side of the street has been cleaned up.
Right.
The fence has been repaired, it looks great.
Right.
There's a sign there that I haven't, I saw tonight when I came through, but I couldn't read it because I was on the other side, I don't know what, if it's up for sale or what it is, but it's.
I haven't seen the sign, but we did reach out to Brock's Industries during the wintertime and let them know that the city was going to be making an improvement aesthetically in, on the property on Busy Corner, and asked them to take a look at the property, and the gentleman from Brock's was very responsive, and said he would put it on the maintenance schedule for this spring.
It looks great, I went by there tonight, and I thought, boy, what a difference that is.
Thank you for bringing that up, so we can give a shout out to Brock's for coming in and taking a look at that.
Right. Yeah, it made a big difference, and certainly understand that area is important because it gets a lot of visibility.
Yeah.
The request for proposal for putting in brick pavers will be advertised either tomorrow or Wednesday. I've been working on the purchasing agent on that, so we're actually hiring a company to come in and do the, the brick pavers. City staff will do the plantings, they're going to be intermingled in those brick paver areas, so, but it'll look real nice, it just, we just couldn't get on top of it this spring.
No, it looks great. What a difference.
Good, so anything further on the City Hall Maintenance Budget? Okay. I'll direct you to the page 118, which is the Community Center Maintenance Budget. Again, a handful of items similar to what you see for City Hall. The only change I'm requesting is a reduction in the fuel item, which is for fuel oil, in the amount of $2,000. This is based off what we're looking at for historic consumption, and with, I believe, our oil bid came in, and I, we're very close to where we were last year, so that hasn't fluctuated significantly, so we're confident that $2,000 reduction will cover us, and obviously, the total reduction in that category is $2,000. Next item is on page 120, and it's the Police Station Maintenance Budget. I'm requesting an overall increase in $4,000 for this category, primarily due to historical costs, a $2,000 increase in lights and power, a $3,000 increase in fuel, which is natural gas for the police station, and a reduction in $2,500 in the maintenance building component, which is due to historical costs, and a $1,000 increase in outside contracts, which will account for, there's an increase in our janitorial contract every year, a slight increase. So the total increase for Police Station Maintenance Budget, again, is $4,000. And those are the, the major changes in the budgets for those particular items. I do have some information on capital improvement projects that we propose for the department, and I can direct you to page 11 of your book. And in the upper right-hand corner is a listing of items that were requested through the Capital Improvement Program for Parks and Recreation. I'll just go through each item individually. The first item is Community Center Heating System Repairs. We started to have issues with some pipes that are starting to deteriorate and leak, and we also have steam traps that we really need to have inspected because they're not operating correctly, and we're requesting $18,000 for an evaluation and also some repairs for some piping that's just rotted out. And we do have some, some files in there in the basement that we rely on, so I think it's important that we, we take care of leaks where we can here, or we're going to have some damage to some, some important stuff. The next item I requested is the Opechii Park Fencing Improvement, which is the chain-link fencing along North Main Street. If you drive by on North Main Street, on the right-hand side, you have the Opechii Cove Picnic Area Playground and Beach, and there's a longstanding chain-link fence that's there that's in, in poor condition and, yep, and it's aesthetically, it isn't really where we want it to be. Certainly serves its purpose in that it, it provides safety to the people in the park, but aesthetically, it's, I wouldn't say it, I wouldn't say it's the best look, or, and hoping at some point that we can accomplish an improvement on that.
So that fence runs from the parking lot entrance down to the corner?
Abuzil Street.
And then down to that pump station?
Right.
And that's the extent of it?
Right. And that would be the $35,000 that I'm requesting is for the black ornamental fence that you'll, you've seen where we're putting in in various locations along the River Walk, they just put in some up at Weers along Lakeside to replace some old chain-link, so that would be the cost to replace it with that black ornamental fence. Next item is Opechii Park Pedestrian Walk. This is for a sidewalk that will cross from Memorial Middle School side of the park to the North Main Street side of the park. This walkway was originally proposed with the school improvement project, but it was removed from that project. I'm not certain why, I assume it was for budgetary reasons, but we find that there's a lot of children that cross the park in the winter, go across the athletic field, which isn't necessarily the worst thing in the world for the athletic field, we'd rather not have it happen during spring conditions, but if there was a walkway that crossed the park, people could safely cross, children could safely cross to have access to the school, it'll keep them off the athletic fields, and it could be maintained in the winter, and hopefully encourage kids to walk to school. There's a large segment of the, large residential area on that side that.
So where would the path be?
It would be adjacent to the, on the north side of Smith Track, so between the track and the four ball fields, and just a paved walkway. And it was just an improvement that we think would be beneficial year-round.
So the primary purpose would be for middle school students coming from the Pleasant Street area?
That, I think it would be, yes, I think that would be a major benefit from that, but I, other time, one thing it also does is keep people off the athletic fields when games are going on, because people cross in the middle of games. There's track and field events that get done in that area, and there's also, it just would, I think, encourage people to, to walk in a designated location.
And you would have to plow in the winter?
It wouldn't need to, I would recommend it be plowed in the winter, just to encourage people to use it.
It's not recommended by the manager, though, at this point, right?
No, no, and the only item recommended by the manager at this time is the Community Center Heating System.
Yeah.
The next item is basketball court resurfacing.
Beach facilities.
Sorry, go ahead.
You skipped over beach facilities.
Oh, yes, I did. Thank you.
These are all the beaches that Laconia residents use.
Well, I would say that, correct.
Bond and Bartlett.
Bond, Bartlett, and the two Opecis.
Yeah, and, you know, we spend a lot of money for the tourist beach, but.
Right.
We're not doing anything right now for.
Right.
How bad is the erosion?
I would say that it's, it's, the, the condition of the beaches is continuously degrading. Is it at a point now where it's a bad experience for people to be there? No, but particularly Bond Beach, there are areas where ledge is starting to show through on the beach, and if you walk at some of the, walk some of the other beaches, you'll see that there are areas of erosion, like Opechii Cove has a corner that's, particularly during high water conditions, is starting to erode on one corner of it. And what we're looking to, in order for us to address the beach and replenish it, similar to what we're dealing with at Weers Beach, you need to have drainage improvements done before the state will allow you to replenish beaches. So this is the first step, identifying what drainage improvements can be done to, to slow the erosion of these beaches. And it's, it's a step that needs to be done, that would require us to bring in an engineer to propose what necessary drainage improvements would be feasible at those locations, and then in the following year, there would be an additional CIP request for the actual construction of those elements.
Maybe we could find some one-time money.
Okay.
It's a good point. Burning a hole in your pocket.
I'll move on to basketball court resurfacing at Tardif Park and at Sandborne Park. Both of those court surfaces are in need of resurfacing. This does not mean tearing out the entire surface, this means going in, putting a, a new top layer, colored layer on, and restriping it for tennis, pickleball, basketball. And those two courts, if you go, they're right down to bare pavement, the coloring's pretty well gone, there's no lines left. Again, it's just something that, that would allow us to keep up with those and make it, make them a more usable experience.
Anything to offer in the way of assessment of use of those courts?
I would say Sandborne Park gets significant use. I believe Tardif Park does not, but I think it would, particularly if we look to paint pickleball lines on these courts, because pickleball is a growing sport.
Yeah.
I mean, we're getting over 20 people a day in the winter to use pickleball at our, at our gymnasium, so we are putting pickleball lines on the courts at Levitt, but I think the, like, say, Tardif Park would be available for tennis, basketball, and pickleball, depending who shows up first and what they want to use it for.
How do you do that?
Well, you leave the net up, and you can use tennis, somebody could show up and play tennis. Pickleball, you just, it's a different set of lines, and you can use the same net, or people could play half-court basketball.
Is that the way it is now?
We used to have a tennis net up, we no longer have put a tennis net up there because the, the posts are.
Tardif, you mean?
Tardif, yes. Sandborne is primarily basketball. We wouldn't put a tennis net there. There used to be tennis courts there, but those are removed, I think, when they put the playground in, and I don't think we need an additional tennis.
Part of it's kind of dependent on the demographics of the neighborhood.
Right.
How many kids there are.
Right, right. Okay, and the last item is a centralized irrigation control system, and this is, we have 25, 24, 25 irrigation systems that we manage that have timers, that need to be monitored, and we'd like to work towards a centralized way of controlling those systems versus sending people out to make adjustments, particularly our larger ball fields, and be able to do it remotely from a computer desktop, and that technology is available. This, this item, and the amount of $50,000 would be to, to do everything at once. Could certainly understand that this could be a phased project where we could identify some of our larger fields that need more monitoring, that could certainly be something that could be prioritized, but again, I'm looking at ways to make things more efficient, but also have a, produce a better product on our athletic fields, and to ultimately save money in the long run.
So how would that work?
It would be based off of, all your control boxes can, we would have to replace some of our, but some, and some of our new systems now have control boxes that actually have the capability of putting in what would be like a. of putting in what would be like a cellphone service almost. So it would be based on cell data. But you could also do landline-based networking through them, but not all, all the systems have, would have landline capability. So it would likely be like a cell, almost like a cellphone.
So via a cellphone in your office, you could check on the condition of twenty different irrigation systems?
Or more likely a desktop that would have connection or an iPad or something.
Would work with phone, wireless.
Right. Right. And those are the, go ahead.
Was the beach facility drainage improvements presented to the capital improvement committee? Did they consider it at all?
It's ranked here.
Yeah, it's ranked forty-five.
I'm missing it. Okay, I was looking over here. Thank you. That answers my question. It was a stupid question.
I'm just reading, though.
And those are the capital, capital improvement projects that are proposed for the upcoming fiscal year.
Mr. Mayor.
It would be a great time to chime in with the general overview. Kevin, like all of our department heads, is a great advocate for his department. And a lot of this comes down to CIP rank and available funding. You will notice just below the police capital projects, there is a recommendation for a hundred thousand dollars to go into the non-capital reserve account so that the city council can have some opportunity to weigh in on some of these projects that maybe aren't directly funded. But there's some blanket funding that's targeted to go into the non-capital reserve. And we've just gotten back bids on the city hall window replacements, so that's in the mix here. And I think there's somewhere just under a hundred thousand dollars in the non-capital reserve account as it stands today. And that's after the funds that we've encumbered for the city hall window replacement.
It's a little less than that, it's about fifty.
Fifty, okay. So there's fifty there, another hundred slaged to go in, so there's an opportunity for the council to weigh in. And there's some, potentially some additional one-time funds that are not earmarked for anything right now, other than going into a contingency account. Or just try to throw her a bone.
I'll take any bone.
I think Council Bear made a good point about the, you know, making sure that the community beaches are, provide a good experience as well as the tourist beach.
Absolutely. So there is some flexibility there as we work through the budget and after we adopt the budget.
Great. I'd welcome any other questions?
Are you, are you at the end of your presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Questions?
Just one on the drainage improvement. Does that have to, is that amount covered all five beaches?
And that would be the four beaches.
Four beaches.
Right.
And I guess we could talk about this another time, but is it, is there tremendous cost efficiencies doing all? In other words, for example, I think the mayor made the point a couple of meetings ago about Bond Beach, probably have new life with the trail going through.
Bartlett Beach.
Bartlett Beach, excuse me. You know, can we take one from start to finish as opposed to doing four studies and...
Right. There potentially could be some cost savings, particularly Opechik where you get two beaches located, so that might make it a, those two might be able to be grouped together. But certainly you could split them up. I would think priority-wise would be Bond Beach. Then Bartlett Beach needs attention, so maybe splitting it into, you know, two separate projects, fund them as groups of two.
Yeah, I'm just saying, maybe in terms of considering them on, doing the study and the construction, depending...
Right.
What's your assessment of Bartlett Beach at present?
Bartlett Beach, we've...
The whole area?
The whole area. I think it's been seeing significant improvement with the introduction of the WOW Trail. I was down there last Friday talking to Nabata at the end of Kesar Court, who's been kind of a watchdog for us. And he's just very pleased and seen significant improvement with just the general respect of the area and the activity. I don't think, just like anywhere, the negative activity that's traditionally occurred down there, I think takes a little while to get rid of. But with the introduction of the WOW Trail there, the stand-up Laconia is working on putting in a mural on the back of the bath house. We're putting in new security lighting this week on the bath house. We're installing a volleyball net in the beach this week. And we're going to do a renewed, renewed attempt at trying to really maintain the beach. That beach gets so much, everything washes into that corner of the lake and blows into that corner of the lake. So that beach needs almost daily attention, just with debris that comes up on the water's edge. So we're going to be making a better effort to just keep on top of that. So I think we're, we're going to see it be...
A lot more people are going to be seeing that beach now.
Absolutely. And we've identified it as a priority, starting this year and moving on, not only because of the WOW Trail, but we think it's a, something that's just, started a hidden gem that's had a reputation for a long time. And it's, it's really good, it's a beautiful spot. And more people are going to be using it. And we removed the big chain link fence that was along the rail corridor that was just fallen and full of vines. I encourage anybody to take a walk down there. We just completed a crossing over Kesar Court. There used to be a stairway that crossed the railroad tracks. We now have a paved ramp over that, so that section of the residential area of Laconia can access from Kesar Court. So I think we're going to find it's going to be a much more utilized and appreciated facility here.
Councilor Bolduc.
Levitt Park.
Yes.
That big tree.
There's a lot of them, but I know the one you're talking about.
Branches are coming down.
Yeah, yeah. We, the one in the corner by Elm Street. Yeah, yeah.
I'm just concerned about somebody being in there and those branches that are starting to come off that tree like...
Yeah. At this point, I, once we get into new...
They had cables put in there to hold some of them.
True.
What's happening is the ones that don't have cables are breaking off and coming down, so...
Right. And we'll have it evaluated. And also, the chestnut tree in Lakeport Square has lost a couple limbs.
That's what I'm talking about.
Oh, I thought you meant Levitt Park, okay. No, actually, I spoke with a arborist today. He's going to be doing an evaluation this week to give us recommendations on what we should do with that tree. Whether we need to add more cabling or whatever. But we're getting, so...
Dangerous.
Right. So I'll be getting that recommendation and I'll forward it to you when I get that, so you can pass it along to the Lakeport folks. And I think generally the tree is in decent condition. We just may need to do some things to protect it.
The branches are so long.
Right. Yeah. Can't support themselves any longer. Right.
On the Opechik Park path situation, did you give consideration to using crushed rock there instead of asphalt?
I did, but with winter maintenance, it would be difficult, I think, to plow. And anything with, those, although it's more expensive for an asphalt surface, the dirt surface would need maintenance, more maintenance. And I'll be honest, with any of the rocks, the kids pick them up and they end up in the field and...
On the track, yeah.
Any gravel or that type of thing, but certainly would be a lower-cost alternative.
I'm just thinking it might be more pleasantly aesthetically, too, than asphalt pavement through the park.
Well, we envision it...
Put a green one.
Right. Come across and then, and then running it right along, just on the north edge of the fence, on the edge of the track. So it wouldn't necessarily be right through the middle of a grass strip. It's going to be off to the side of the fields and run behind the backstops. And it'll extend right to the parking lot, in the corner of the parking lot, right near where the portable toilets are at Opechik. So it's, it'll be tucked up against the fence, so I don't think the, it wouldn't be right in the middle of something, and I don't necessarily think it'll get tracked.
Pretty good slope going up to that fence there.
No, I, not, at the very end, it wraps around, but that goes up before, we would have it tied into the parking lot before that slope.
Other questions?
Very good.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I certainly appreciate the support from all of you. I think we've got a great park system, and I think that has to do with a lot of, the support that we receive from all of you, and I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on to planning code enforcement conservation commission. I see Mr. Trump on there.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. You don't, you don't, you don't have to do that. All right, so for 2018 budget, the planning and community development and code enforcement is four distinct activities that you're funding. Planning, obviously, zoning administration and enforcement. The code enforcement, which includes the building maintenance property and also new permits and electrical permits, and then also conservation efforts. We support the following boards. All of these boards are volunteers from the, from the, from the community, and our staff supports them. Planning board, including the technical review committee, the zoning board of adjustment and the building code of appeals, conservation commission, the heritage commission, the special events committee and the capital improvements program. Just a quick rundown on revenues and expenses. The 2017 budget revenues are approximately a hundred and sixty thousand. Total budget is about four thirty-seven. And then for the proposed budget for fiscal year 2018, revenues are projected to be around a hundred and fifty-two.
Page, you want?
I'm sorry?
Page.
On the phone.
Oh, on the handout, sorry.
Estimated revenue is about a hundred and fifty-two thousand for next year, and proposed expenses are four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, about ten thousand dollars less overall. On the next page of the handout, this label is thirty-seven at the bottom. This is right from the budget book. I'm not sure the page numbers will match up with the, with the budget book because it was when I was fooling around with the PDF file. I think some of the, some of the page numbers might have got renumbered. But anyway, this is the, this is the page. You can, at the very bottom, the extreme right-hand column, for code enforcement, which again is building permits, electrical permits, and there are property maintenance efforts. It's a hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars, which is about eight hundred dollars less than the current fiscal year. Moving on to the next page, page thirty-eight at the bottom. I draw your attention to, in the middle of the page, there are some code enforcement activities. The bottom line of that section, property maintenance cases, you can see the number of cases that we've done over the past several fiscal years. And fiscal year fifteen was a, kind of a high area of a hundred and twenty. Fiscal year sixteen was fifty-eight. I don't have a final number for this year, but it's going to be around that number. And I'll discuss those numbers a little bit more in just, just a moment. And then moving on to the next page of the handout, this is the summary for just the code enforcement efforts. Building code and property maintenance enforcement, we document follow-up on complaints. We do periodic driving around inspections to, just to see what we can see from the road, and we follow up with those property owners. I will say that recent cases that we have been handling tend to be more intense and are repeat offenders. And by more intense, I mean there's more of the stuff and there's more issues at, at each property as opposed to being relatively minor and kind of easy to take care of. And also, the property owners are a little more resistant to enforcement. Counselor?
I guess in particular, the entrances to the city from coming down 106, the Irving Station, is that part of your code enforcement activities or are we handling that outside of that?
It is. They are a grandfathered use, so it's a little difficult situation. Are you talking about the towing company, is that right?
No.
No, I'm sorry. The, the vacant gas station on 106, just across from Wyatt Park. I actually have some information because... I'm not familiar. I know Councilor Hamel would be bringing that up tonight if he was here. So in addition to reaching out to Brock's Industries early this winter, I reached out to Irving as well. Irving has that property as well as the old office building on Messer Street and a building behind it that isn't visible from the street, but down by the area, the WOW Trail and the tracks there. And finally getting ahold of the right person, and sometimes that's challenging because they had a different property maintenance division and names have changed, but I've gotten the new appropriate contact this year. And he identified they were looking at the Messer Street property for possible demolition of that building. And I indicated to him that while that building isn't any great shakes to look at, the one at South Main and Province is far more deteriorated. The shingles are coming off the roof, there's some graffiti, there's some overgrown material on the lot. So this conversation with him probably took place about two weeks ago. He indicated he would bring that to his property division team as a recommendation that the city would rather prioritize that building. He does owe me some follow-up this week, so if I don't hear back from him by midweek, I'll reach out. But I do have a fresh contact and we had, had ongoing conversations. My understanding is more than likely they will be taking that building down, but not necessarily looking to put it on the market or do anything more, other than just leveling the lot and maybe pouring some gravel or something. Certainly, we can continue conversations about doing something a little above and beyond, or I understand from a competitive nature, they don't want another service station to go in there, but we could find something that shows off that, that gateway property a little bit better.
Why don't you, Councilor Bolduc, ask a question?
Elm Street, six thirty-six Elm Street. Take a look at that place.
Okay. I'll put it on the list.
Councilman Lippman.
You know, if we go back to eleven, we did nineteen hundred and thirty-two inspections. We're doing about half. The third page in, has bottom, page thirty-eight on the bottom.
What's, what's happening, counselor, I believe, is, is, over the years, we've had this effort to, to work with the property owners. And most people, once they're contacted and once they get into compliance, they have tendencies to stay there. So the number of properties that we have to look at are, are going down a little bit, and that's why I say, but the ones that do remain are a little more complicated, a little more intense and, and not so easy to work with, you know. So I think that's why you're seeing that downward number. The ones that are out there are, in some cases, very visible and, and, you know, not, you know, they're very bad. And, but there's not a lot of them necessarily.
The other thing, I, in terms of recognizing those properties that have turned around, we're still, are you part of the team that helps identify those or how are we...
Dean is not a part of that, but you're speaking of the front porch initiatives.
Yes.
And we've done some periodic outreach, and we're, we're probably due to do that again right now. And that's where we try to get neighbor submittals or counselor submittals of recognizing properties in their neighborhood or areas they go drive by. And before and after pictures are certainly helpful, just for a visual of what something looked like before and how it's been shaped up now. So we will get something out in the Laconia Links and on channel twenty-six in the next week or so and start looking for submittals. But we really encourage, you know, our residents to identify positives in their neighborhood and, and send them our way.
I've given a couple of them. Last year, nothing happened, but I brought it back again and she said she was going to look at it.
Okay.
Hopefully.
It's good to point out the good.
Absolutely. And we do hang those on a banner on a, the bulletin board down in the lobby of City Hall, so they're there for people to come in and look at the pictures.
At the appropriate time, and it may not be this second, I'd like you to walk us through what the staffing is currently in this department.
Sure, absolutely. I'll, I can, I can do that in just a moment, sure. We also have the partnership continuing with the Laconia Housing Authority to do their inspection as we're doing that in conjunction with the fire department. In the coming, ongoing right now and particularly in the upcoming year, CodePal is a new software program that we're going to be using within the department for tracking permits and, and also code violations. And that is in the process of being implemented. A little bit of growing pains with it right now, but we're getting there. We're also in the process of reviewing forms for their efficiency and friendliness. As you know, I've been here about four months now, so I've got a pretty good handle on what's going on and what the common complaints are, so I'm trying, we're going to start working through some of these issues. Continuing an emphasis on customer service improvement, both at the counter and on the phone and out, out in the field, and put a greater emphasis on interdepartment relationships. The staffing, to answer your question, Mayor, in, within code enforcement is two and a half people. We have a full-time building inspector. We have a full-time administrative assistant who handles a lot of the building permit applications and, and also issuing them once they've been approved by the various departments. And then we have a part-time code enforcement individual that is, also helps in the office as well.
So the, so you're the director.
I'm the director.
And the assistant building inspector is full-time?
The building inspector is full-time, yes.
It's called assistant here. I assume that means your assistant?
Correct, yep.
Okay. So that's one full-time.
The secretary, that's the admin assistant, she... The secretary, that's the admin assistant, she handles processing of building permits, electrical permits.
So that's the second full-time?
Yes. And then the part-time property maintenance clerk.
All right. So how, how does this compare historically for that department? These all employees, by the way, I'm assuming? There's no contract involved here?
Correct.
Correct.
We used to have a contract, yeah.
We did. We shifted a little bit. So when I first got here, we were without a code director. And one of the items I brought to the council was to add that responsibility to the planning director. So we now have one department head who oversees both departments. We opened up the work area downstairs so there was better working between planning and code. So you, part of Dean's salary, I think 70% is in the planning department and 30% is under the code. So that's how we allocate his salary, just as a rough proportionment of time. We've always had the full-time admin in the code and we've always had some part-time hours. I want to say it was probably three years ago, I think we bumped up the part-time property maintenance hours from maybe around 22 hours, 20 or 22 hours a week, up to where it is right now of 20
25.
25, 26 hours a week. So we added a handful or so of part-time hours to that. And on, on the planning side, in addition to the planning director, we have an assistant planning director, we have an administrative assistant there, we have a conservation tech, and we have a zoning tech. So that's the same capacity that we've had since I've started here. So the only change is really director now oversees an extra department and we've added a few time, few part-time hours to the part-time position.
So in terms of, of somebody out in the field, making inspections, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, does that include, is a part-time person involved in that or only the full-time?
Both.
Both?
The part-time person has a primary responsibility is, is to do that and then plus follow-up. I mean, it's not all driving around out in the field because once you find something, you follow up on it.
What's the, what's the full-time's primary responsibility?
Building inspection, electrical inspection, and, and while he's out in the field, if he sees things.
So, so from a code enforcement standpoint, it's really the part-time person?
Yes. For building, property maintenance and, and, and those kinds of things, yes. Some of the things that we see that some people think are code enforcement also fall into zoning administration, and we do have a zoning technician that, that will handle those things as well. Things like unregistered cars and those kinds of things are not coded violations, those are zoning violations.
And that's, historically, we've never had more than that in terms of somebody out in the field?
Not in
In terms of code enforcement violations?
Not in the six years I've been here.
So we have
And when it was a director, the director's responsibility was to be out in the field. It wasn't just strictly an office position. So I think we've had the same coverage or a little bit, a few hours extra a week greater over the last couple of years.
So, so we are down then in terms of actual hours put to this task?
We reclassified the job position, added more responsibility to the position, so the department head is now
I mean, you're not out doing code enforcement?
Well, not, not on a regular basis. I mean, I've been out through, to a couple of properties to take a look, you know, firsthand, but not, not as primarily, no.
So have you, have, I know you mentioned four months. Have you, has four months been long enough for you to form any impressions of, of the code enforcement issue in the city?
I have, yes, I have two impressions. First one is, you're very tough as a city and, and that's probably a good thing, but you are very tough as a city. And the second thing is, I'm not sure that we're doing it as, as well as we should. And, and that's something that I need to work on.
Okay. A, we're tough, and B, you're not sure we're tough enough? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm not sure that we're, we're, that our efforts are being correctly allocated.
Because obviously we get, I mean, we all know this, we get a lot of complaints privately, some public, about the city's lack of responsiveness, whatever you want, a lack of pro, being proactive, that sort of thing in this area. And, you know, I guess taking it from its, if you look at the darkest side of the coin, it's, you know, the city lets people get away with murder is
I, I hear those complaints as well, yes.
Afraid you're here, I'm sure you heard them too, is how come you're not doing something about
Right.
X, Y, and Z.
And, and the short answer is, as I went back, going back to what I said earlier, the, the cases are a little more intense and they're a little more difficult and the, and the property owners are overall a little less cooperative. And it's not, you know, it's not a magic wand to
So we've picked the low-hanging fruit.
Exactly, exactly, right. And, you know, we send out letter of violations and we send them by certified mail and I, you know, there's a high percentage that are never even picked up. They just ignore them. And we've gone to the point of sending them again in unmarked envelopes. Whether they get them or they don't, I don't know. But my suspicion is they at least open them up, but they, they still generate no response. So the next step, of course, is to continue monitoring and then at some point in time you try to go to court, but that's, that's, that's a dicey situation as well.
Is there a lot of non-resident owners? I mean, are we talking about people?
It's a combination of both. I mean, it's not, you just can't say it's, you know, absentee landlord. I mean, there is some of that, yes. But there's also people who are living in town and running their businesses in town and they're just as much, you know, to be, you know, they're just as apt to be in violation as, as an absentee.
It's harder to go after the absentee, I imagine.
Yes, it is. We're, we're working one case now, the owner is in Indiana. It's, I'm not driving out there.
I'll go to Indiana. I can go to French Lick.
I, I don't know where he is in relation to French Lick, but he's in Indiana. It's a big state.
Yeah.
Do you want to say Jim Sawyer, the police prosecutor, has been head partner and has started working with us in City Hall on some of the more egregious issues over, probably started that maybe about two, two and a half years ago. So Jim has been helpful. We were lax prior to that in having our documentation in some cases, I'm talking ancient history now, we'd go to the court and not have our ducks in a row and, and the court kind of said, you know, you need to step it up a little bit and working with the department first and then working with Jim Sawyer, we've been able to put some, some better checks and balances and better procedures in place to, to the documenting end so that it's more beneficial to us when we go to court. But like Dean said, the courts more often than not are going to err on the side of the resident either doesn't understand, doesn't have the means, doesn't have the wherewithal to give them every benefit of the doubt. And that's some of the frustration that we have on an ongoing basis with some of the properties that I know you're frustrated with.
Anything else on code enforcement before we move on?
All right, next page of the handout, Conservation Commission budget. It's up $250. We're increasing the line item for weed watchers. The rest of that page is, is an eye chart. It's very hard to read, I know. So go to the next page and I'll give you my little summary here in much bigger print. Ongoing activities for Conservation Commission, and this is supported primarily by our conservation technician, part of the planning department. As an aside, I will say that I'm also trying to get him a little more cross-trained in a few other aspects so that we can get a little help either at the counter or, or potentially with code or zoning violations. He's a member of the planning department, so I want to use him as, as much as we can. Ongoing activities, documented follow-up on complaints, of course. They review the plans for new projects and then advise the planning board. They are in the process, particularly this time of year, monitoring construction sites for proper erosion control. They're working with the Water Department in New Hampshire DES on millfoil projects. They are in partnership with the Wintasquon Watershed Association and the Lakes Region Planning Commission. And when the time comes, they will be leading the update to the Natural Resources Section of the Master Plan. Education efforts that they would like to do is more on millfoil invasive species and, species and water quality. And they're, under Natural Resources Inventory, they would like to reinstate into the zoning ordinance the 30-foot water body buffer. I'm not sure exactly when that went away, but they would like to reinstate that. They're working on some more conservation easements or purchase opportunities, probably mostly easements. And they're also helping to expand the Wild Trail and other trail linkage. Any questions on conservation?
What's the status, I'm sorry, Counselor Bolduc?
Water quality, what, what, what's that?
Primarily it's runoff opportu, runoff issues
From the roads or?
From the roads or from adjoining lands that go into brooks and streams and, and marshes and, and those kinds of things.
Okay. I didn't think it had anything to do with the Water Department.
No, no, not the Water Department, nope.
Where does our fund stand? What's the status of that?
On which fund?
Water quality?
The Conservation Fund, where we take land use change taxes and put it in that fund up to a certain amount, as I recall. I think it's
I'm not sure.
It's maxed out at the $250,000 level and so no additional funds will be flowing into there. They flow into the general fund instead. Were to that be reduced in order through an easement or a purchase of some property, then funds would repopulate that down to
So it's at 250?
Is that 250?
Any other questions?
Do they have any plans to spend any of that 250?
Not that I'm aware of at this time. I know they're working on several easements with property owners, but I, we don't have anything concrete at this moment.
Counselor Lippman, just trying to recall, last time we tapped into that fund was, I think on White Oaks Road for the very good soils there. There, there's no other
Nothing.
Those opportunities that are
Didn't Mr. Herrent and
I believe there's, there's one that I think they're a little bit more advanced on and one maybe or more that I'm not as aware of. But I think they are continuing to explore for those quality types of purchases and/or easements. So they are working at it, just nothing is, is materialized. There's a lot to it with the property owner having to go out and get appraisals and agreements and you're working with a volunteer commission. So it's, there's some, there's some time that happens, but they are working towards some properties at this point.
Has the, has the Conservation Commission met with the Water Board about millfoil?
Yes, they have. I want to say about six weeks ago.
Was that over the Pogus Bay issue or?
Yes.
And what, what was the result of that meeting?
There, there are some concerns, but they're, since it's such a limited trial that they, they're, they're willing to go.
I'm sorry?
It's, because it's a limited trial, it's a small area and it's, it's for a certain amount of period of time.
But I guess what's the Conservation Commission advocating for in those meetings?
Well, the water quality, I mean, and they're on the same page as the Water Department from, from that standpoint, but the water quality. And I mean, they're working the millfoil issue from several different angles and that's just one of, of others.
They're not concerned about millfoil, they're concerned about the water?
Yes, yes, yeah. Yeah, we're not trying to protect the millfoil. Yeah, we just have that out of here. Any, any, any questions?
Those save the millfoil bumper stickers coming out?
Nope, not this, not this year.
When you say, when you said millfoil projects up there, I thought they were concerned about millfoil, but they're not concerned about millfoil.
No, no, no.
Planting it while we're trying to
Concerned about the, the quality of the water around the millfoil, when they do the tests in the, in the eradication. Anything else on conservation? All right, moving on to planning, next page of the handout. Bottom of the page, far right-hand column, 278 903 for planning. That's down about almost $10,000. The only real changes in salaries, the rest of the line items are, are pretty well level-funded.
Change in salaries is because different experience levels?
Primarily because my predecessor was maxed out and I'm not.
Congratulations. Counselor Lippman?
The Master Plan, those are funds we've already got attributed for the work that we're looking to do.
Yeah, we've carried them forward, they're already existing, yes.
On the next page, which has a 77 at the bottom there, under the, the written text, the planning activities, I draw your attention to the second and third sentence in that paragraph. We, we have been carrying a number of projects that were approved several years ago and they keep getting extensions. And the, the number of those projects is going down at a pretty steady clip. The number fluctuates from month to month depending upon what's been approved and what's been extended, but the, the main point is, a lot of the projects that were approved just before or during the recession and nobody wants to do them or hasn't wanted to do them are now coming to the fore. So they're, they're becoming active again. We do have a few new projects that are in the pipeline. We have a major 86-unit development on Endicott Street, which will probably be approved in July. And then we have another very large, even larger project that is in the initial stages. They have not gone to the planning board yet with that, but they're in the initial stage. So there, there is some development. There's been a, a number of smaller projects that have come on, you know, not necessarily big items in, in high numbers of units, but there are been a number of smaller items that have been going along. Yes, sir?
On the projects that are extended, I'm trying to remember what our policy was in and around the impact fees and when those, if a project was approved without impact fees, in other words, earlier, how long can they go, not subject to it?
Yeah, we changed it, didn't we?
Impact fees are assessed when we issue
25%?
Yeah, they're at the 20%.
25.
25%. But we don't, and we don't levy them until we do
I understand that, but there were certain projects that were approved before the regulation was put into place and those projects were not subject to that. And I'm just trying to get a sense of
How many are still out there?
How many are still out there that are not impact fee kind of connected?
I don't have a handle on that.
Let us do a little homework on that, on when the initial approval came, because I think the impact fees came into play right around 2010, maybe as late as early 2011. So let us do an inventory and give you a, a number of predate that it would be still grandfathered, assuming that their approvals are still current and anything that we're expecting after that date.
Didn't we change the extension times?
Yes, that's what I was trying to remember, Counselor.
Yeah. We shortened the number of times it could be extended or a, a period of time, not too many years ago.
Let us, let us get our arms around that. We can put together a, a brief outline for you of where that stands.
I just want to read this out loud again for sake of all of us, because it's a tremendous concern to me. The third sentence of that lead paragraph says, meanwhile, new project approvals slowed to only nine residential and seven commercial. That has pretty serious ramifications and consequences for the whole community, including tax gap calculations.
The good news, some of those are really big projects that are coming up. That's the good news. But you're right, it's a good, good point.
Counselor Lippman? I guess in terms of that, what the mayor just made as a point, when you say really big, are we talking about ones that would, without trying to give up information, in terms of what you're carrying in the draft budget for the growth and, and new construction, that what's out there in the pipeline supports that estimate?
Yeah, I haven't made any assumptions for the budget. We, we did, based on the actuals here. So the number that ended on April or March 31st of, of this calendar year, which is the end of the assessing year, that's the figure we used in the tax gap. So we haven't inflated that because anything that hits post-April 1 will be in the budget you work at next year. So again, we're spot-on with what we've estimated and no, no funny numbers.
There was a editorial in the Concord Monitor today, which I'll try to get copies of and circulate to, all of, I think it was written by some official from the New Hampshire Board of Realtors about the, from their perspective, the significant housing shortage in New Hampshire and what its consequences on the future growth of the economy are. That, the amount of housing inventory in the state is at, is at historically low numbers. And basically, the bottom line is, new houses are just not being built in the state of New Hampshire. And it's hurting the economy now and it's going to get worse.
Moving on to the next page, 78. The steering committee, made up of council members and planning board members, has been formed and is starting to work. The first order of business will be the vision statement in the land use chapter. The other chapters will follow after that, and then I will warn you, once we get the land use chapter into place, you could expect to see a number of substantial zoning ordinance revisions come your way for two reasons. One, my staff, for more than a year or so, probably close to two years, has been keeping a list of items that they have come across in their daily business of, we need to address this, we need to add this, we need to take away this, or we need to redefine this, whatever it is, and they've been waiting for the master plan to be finished to do that. So those things are building up. And then the second thing is, we do expect with the revised land use chapter to drive a number of zoning changes as well, that will be the outfall from that, to make the master plan become a reality. We're looking, again, on the planning and zoning side, we're looking for process and customer service improvements. Again, we're reviewing and updating forms and procedures. We've got CodePal going on the planning side as well, we'll finish that implementation. And we are looking at the special events process. We're going to come to the council with a proposal in the next, in the coming fiscal year with, hopefully, a process improvement on the special events process. Ongoing activities, we're going to focus on fostering infill and smart growth opportunities, and personally, I hate the term smart growth, but I know it's in vogue and a lot of people use it. Infill is very important, and we have had a few people over the past couple of months have come in and talked about some various things that they might want to do. They're looking at different pieces of property and see what they could do. Nothing that's been formally proposed, but there are several tire kickers out there, so that's a good thing. I'm increasing site visits by staff, particularly myself. I've been going out and going on different site visits with either other staff members or by myself. We're going to try to provide more guidance to our boards and commissions from a professional staff standpoint, and I'm going to focus on--
Amen to that.
Yes, sir. And staff development, we've had recent new hires, conservation technician and the zoning technician. The zoning technician just started about a month ago, so we've had some new hires that we're in the process of doing--
You're fully staffed now?
We are fully staffed now, yes. Yep. So, but it's a learning curve there. There's nobody out on the open job market that has zoning technician as their prior experience that we can find anyway, or that wants to apply for the job, so it's a, try to get the best skill match that you can, and then it's a training process, but I think we're in pretty good shape. And that concludes my formal presentation, I'd be more than happy to answer any of the questions.
Can you give us a quick, nice sneak preview of what you mean by special events process?
Without taking away our thunder, sure.
I mean, are we talking about Motorcycle Week, Pumpkin Festival?
Yeah, and any, I mean, there's all kinds of special events, I mean, there's parades and people put on different kinds of things. It's the whole process of the application and going through the committee and all the other approvals that need to be done. In many cases, it's a, for lack of a better term, a rubber stamp, because it's the same people every year and they do the exact same thing, and we're trying to just do different things that are going to-- Special Events Committee, as you know, is all city staff, so if we can reduce the amount of time that they have to spend on this without taking away any of the effectiveness, we certainly would like to do that.
And what do you mean by focus on fostering infill and smart growth opportunities?
Part of this is going to be driven by the master plan, but as I mentioned, you know, we've had some people come in, and they're looking at different pieces of property, and they're asking, what can we do there?
The property owners are?
No, prospective--
Perspective buyers?
Perspective buyers, who might want to either rehab a current building or looking at a piece of land that's in between something that's maybe vacant or drastically underutilized, perhaps something like the Irving Station down on, you know, whatever. Do something different. Infill, the infrastructure is already there, you've already got your street, your water, your sewer, your sidewalks are already there, it's just a matter of this piece of land, let's do something with it that's better than what has been there in the past.
Counselor Lutman? I guess in that regard, to the extent there are those opportunities, I hope we work into the master plan process, those things that would enable those things--
Exactly, exactly, but in the meantime, from a staff standpoint, we can try, we're trying very hard to work with these people, give them our best options of what you can do, and, you know, we certainly want to encourage them, and we make it very clear to them that we are willing to work with them and try to do what they want to do.
It seems like we've, from afar anyway, it seems like we've kind of hit a brick wall on that project in terms of finishing it, and I wonder what, have you had any time at all to be able to spend on that and look at? For example, we've been talking about connecting the Landmark Insight with Fair Street for years, as long as I can remember, and that just doesn't seem to ever go anywhere, so right now we have the Riverwalk to nowhere on the south side of the river there.
I have not. We have had some discussions with a couple of landowners that have been kind of reluctant to do easements, but we're not making too much progress.
I just wondered if, you know, and we've never developed a plan on the other side of the river, we've never developed a plan for connecting the end of the Riverwalk on the southwest, I guess, side of Beacon Street West project. That community, the Riverwalk just ends there at the street, and we've never worked seriously, that I know, on what the connectivity possibility would be to get that path back out to the Wild Trail.
Right.
It just stops.
It's on the radar, and it's, you know, it's a difficult process.
Yeah, okay. Anything else?
I could--
Any questions?
I just want to say, Dean's been here a little over four months now, so he jumped in at the very tail end of the budget process. You know, he's done a lot of listening and learning and asking questions and not trying to come in and make changes immediately, but I think he can look at some of the outlines here and the approach of being customer service focused and trying to work with developers, focus on some priorities of the council, of the property maintenance issues and those types of things, and he's done a great job, but I think as the next year evolves, you'll see more of his, you know, fingerprints on that department. I think that's going to be a good thing.
It's encouraging, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you. Okay, we're on to the Police Department, and I see a large delegation here, led by Chief Canfield, Captain, or three, I guess, Captain Groton, and we welcome Commissioner Widdam as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, councilors. I'm honored to have been appointed the chief of police here for the last month, and I follow in some very big footsteps of Chief Adams. As you know, I've been a police officer here in Laconia for over 20 years, and I have a particular fondness for the city of Laconia, our community, and our teamwork and cooperation that we have that exists between the department, city council, department heads of the city, as well as a lot of civic groups throughout the city. I think that speaks very uniquely to the city of Laconia, and I just kind of want to bring that point out. I appreciate the opportunity tonight to present this 2017-18 police budget. Spent some considerable time putting this together over the last several months with the specific goal of fiscal responsibility in doing so. As you know, here in Laconia, we face some unique challenges. We're not immune to a lot of the heroin problems, the heroin epidemic that we faced in New Hampshire and the Northeast. With that in mind, you know, we see certainly a significant amount of substance abuse and misuse in Laconia, and we've worked very hard to deal with that on a regular basis. The police officers that work for Laconia are exposed to a very high, very significant call volume per officer, when we compare that throughout the state. In addition, you know, the police officers that work for us go out of their way to do a lot of policing through non-traditional means, as you know. There's a big community connection, they put hundreds of hours of their own time working and participate in events such as Make-A-Wish, Special Olympics and all that stuff, so I just want to bring out those points. As you know, we do a lot of programs such as that, and it kind of speaks to the way we do policing here in Laconia, it's beyond the traditional enforcement role. We go to, you know, that specific goal of mentoring the youth in our community, and we certainly will continue that as we go forward from here on. I spoke a little bit about the heroin crisis that we've seen, so I highlight our overdose deaths in 2015. We had a total of 83 overdoses with 10 deaths. In 2016, we had 76 overdoses with five deaths. In 2017, we had 34 overdoses with one death, year-to-date. So it seems like we're on somewhat of a downward decline, I hope. We are seeing, in another twist to this epidemic, a drug called Carfentanol. Carfentanol is a synthetic opioid that's 10,000 times more potent than morphine and 100 times more powerful than fentanyl. So we'll see when this kind of spins on this new drug epidemic, but this is a very deadly synthetic opioid. It was originally created as an elephant tranquilizer. It's been confirmed to be here in Laconia, it's confirmed to be here in the state. So far, there's been six deaths contributed to this drug here in New Hampshire. Sir?
In terms of, without disclosing, how do you confirm it's in Laconia? Just by some investigation or by arrest or?
Yeah, actually, this case broke in Manchester. Manchester made an arrest, they did a search warrant, and related it to Carfentanol, tested positive for Carfentanol. We had a case two months prior to that where we had arrested someone, we had no idea that it was Carfentanol. We got the lab results back, and it was confirmed as Carfentanol, and since then, we've had several cases come back as testing positive for this drug. The danger to this stuff is, it's not being sold necessarily as Carfentanol, it's being sold as heroin or cut as heroin with fentanyl, but people are buying it, and it's just Carfentanol, and of course, they overdose much quicker, much faster, and it's much deadlier. In addition, if you breathe this stuff or you absorb it through your skin, you'll overdose instantly, so it's a concern to our officers, to first responders. If you look through, I'm sure you've read through the budget book, I won't bore you with every single line item, but we've asked for additional money in our contracted services. We've been working for just over two years on body-worn cameras. This was recommended in the Presidential 21st Task Force for Modern Policing, and we've been working and building towards implementing a program towards the body-worn cameras. The body-worn cameras are cameras that are attached to every officer, it records their interactions. January this year, there was a law that was passed that kind of outlined the legalities of using those cameras here in the state of New Hampshire. Since then, many departments have gone to it, including Guilford and some other surrounding communities. By no means are body cameras an end-all means to everything. They certainly increase some transparency and legitimacy. They can have an opportunity to increase, you know, improve police officer behavior, citizen interaction, as well as expedite certain types of complaints. So we've included that, working with the city manager. We've included funding to implement that program for six months of the year in kind of a phased-in approach. In addition, you'll see in the contracted services is up from last year, also to fund what's called CopSync. CopSync is a real-time threat alert system primarily for the school system. It enables the school system to go onto their computer systems and click on an icon, thereby notifying us in the event of such an active shooter. The alert would go out by just clicking on either an app on their cellphones or on a computer, and it automatically opens up an alert to the five nearest police cars. They get the alert on their computer in the car, thereby saving a lot of response time. In addition, it opens up like, almost like a chat window, whereas if someone were trapped in a room and they couldn't communicate because they didn't want to talk, that live chat goes out through our dispatch and all five police cars simultaneously. So we've been working with the school system on that. We applied for a federal grant, which we're approved for, which funds the cost of this, half of it for the first year, and we're talking about $1,600 or so in that area. If you just turn to page six in your book--
You also went up on the training, Chief. I know we had a lot of new people this year, right?
Yeah, you know, our training line item has traditionally been cut over the years. Since that point in time, we've equipped officers with patrol rifles to better respond to, you know, an active shooter event. We've equipped officers with less lethal capabilities, as well as tasers. All of those can carry considerable recertification costs every year. The tasers, they have to shoot two cartridges in order to be certified, and they're fairly expensive, as well as ammunition costs, so that's why that training line item went up. On page six of your book, if you look through our stat, you know, our statistics don't show everything, but--
I'm sorry, Chief, what page?
It's page six.
Six.
Of your police budget book?
Oh, the police budget book. Okay.
They're not numbered. It's not numbered.
I guess numbered six.
You roll in a little bit, you'll find, the numbers don't start on page one, but if you go in a few pages, you'll see the page the chief is referring to, I think.
Says page six on the bottom.
I haven't found the chap--
It's after Motorcycle Week.
I got page five, and then I've got--
Motorcycle Week, and then--
Huh?
Motorcycle Week.
Oh, Motorcycle Week, sorry.
So?
It says numbered six on mine.
Page six.
We'll work with the rookie chief on his page numbering for next year. We'll give him a little break for this one.
Thank you, Mary. Between the pages and the--
We're talking about criminal offenses by year, is that where we're at?
Yes, sir.
The statistics.
Just want to highlight that robberies are up to, you know, they were 17 for last year as compared to seven in 2015, although 2015 is kind of an anomaly, they were a little bit lower than normal. Aggressive assaults are up slightly, as well as criminal mischiefs. If you look at, under the drug offenses, they were up to 319 different cases versus 252 the previous year, and that's been building every year since then. That's attributed to the work of our, the two drug detectives that are actively working cases. So in this case, I'd say that that number is a very positive thing, that they're out there making more drug cases and making more arrests attributed to that work, so hopefully that continues. If we go down to the bottom under department activity statistics, criminal offenses investigated were up slightly, and total calls for service were down just slightly as well. If you turn to the next page, the white collar crime, theft by deception was up by 67%, which seems a little skewed because it's only, we're only talking 35 different cases, whereas fraudulent use of a credit card was up slightly as well to 53. Turn it to the next page, community-related calls for service. Officers conducted 2,126 different special response areas. These areas are designated as specific areas that may have issues or problems, that the officers are to spend more time in those areas. the officers are to spend more, put more time in those areas. In addition, they did three thousand one hundred and two park walk and talks. That means that they got out of their car, they walked through the parks, they played basketball with the kids, or something to the like. We conducted one hundred and fifty-eight community policing events, did thirty-three different bicycle registrations, and two hundred and twenty-seven different VIN verifications. In addition, one of the programs that we do is the house and business checks. We conducted ninety of those last year as compared to eighty-five the year before. If you look down to the chart below, the calls for service, I want to apologize, those numbers are actually up one line. It was a typo. So if you look at the total...
Suicide.
The overdoses should be actually, it's one line ahead, so we had sixty, or seventy-six. And then we picked up two hundred and one different hypodermic needles that we took for destruction. Five hundred and thirty-eight welfare checks, which is up from four hundred and ninety-six the year before.
You have three or three to four calls a day about suicidal persons?
It's off a line.
The numbers are off a line.
No, it's actually one hundred and fifty-three.
You've got to drop it down.
Yeah, drop it. See how alarms on the line about threw it all off.
They're all from City.
Hold everything up.
The line above alarms was blank, and the numbers didn't, they should be dropped down.
So it's alarms, that's three or four.
Arms are high suicide.
Still, it's one a day?
Yes.
For suicidal persons?
No. It's all of them. One every other day.
One fifty-three.
One hundred and fifty-three.
Sixty-five days.
And every couple of days.
Still a lot.
It is a lot.
Seems like a lot.
Do you have any sense of how that statistic compares? I thought Belknap County did have a higher incidence of suicidal...
And we certainly, we certainly, you know, deal with a significant amount of mental health-related issues, and I think that's where the suicidal issues come into play. And certainly, Laconia would be, population-wise, a little bit more significant than other towns in Belknap County, but it's certainly not unlike anything in comparable-sized cities.
Do you mind just feeling around for some other, trying to just get a sense of how big a relative issue it is for Laconia versus other communities?
Yes, I can do that.
Just some of the comparable-sized towns that you, I mean, don't make it a big study, just a few of them, if you wouldn't mind.
Will do. Turn to, forward to page seventeen. I won't read through all of them, but...
Community Connections?
We can auto-number these pages in my answer.
The one that's titled Community Connections?
Yes, sir. These are, these are the majority of the partners that we work with, myself included, and all the staff, including several of the sardines, sit on different boards and groups throughout the city, and they attend these meetings on a regular basis. And this just kind of highlights something, you know, the majority of them that we participate in and give time to. That concludes what I have. If anybody has any questions?
Well, I think you did a good job for your first time.
Thank you.
Even without the pages, we found our way.
Anyone else with questions at this point?
We do have, just like I identified a couple of weeks ago, we do have a request for use of some of the impact fees, I believe. I forget the exact dollar amount, but to transfer out of impact fees into one of the capital items, I believe, that we did it in to help make this budget whole. So that'll be an ongoing theme that you hear. We're using some out of, I forget who it was, a week ago.
Library.
Police.
Yep.
I think we've got some in fire that we'll be bringing forward as part of the overall budget recommendations to help tie everything together.
Are they itemized in the category, are they categorized, the police department, the fire department, there?
Yeah.
Because you can change the designation, can't you?
No, they're dedicated for the purpose in which they're received, but they are broken down by the department that they're allocated to. That should be in your, it's in the report that I do, I think, the first agenda of the month. So for your next meeting, you should have an update of the impact fees.
So I guess the big question here, as far as a police budget request, has to do with these body cameras.
Correct. That is the major increase.
I want to make sure we have a good understanding of that before we leave tonight, or as best we can. And we're specifically referring to the line item that says outside services contracts, which for 2016, seventeen, was, the budget was forty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. So let's start with, what did that cover?
What page are you on?
The outside contracted services covers our main operating record system, our email system, our Outlook system, our, all of our record management system, right?
Yes.
Eighty-three.
That's what it covers now.
Okay, so that's the forty-two thousand dollars.
Correct.
Okay. So this year, you're asking for one oh seven.
Correct. That would be the amount to fund the body cameras for the entire year. At the city manager's recommendation, we agreed to do that to half of it.
Half of the force?
No, to fund it for half the year.
Oh, half a year.
So the body camera system is about sixty thousand dollars.
All right, so the city manager, in effect, is recommending to delay the implementation of that program by six months. Is that what...
Start it roughly on January one. That way, we can fit half of the new expense into this fiscal year, and the other half would roll in as of next July one.
Would that be everybody?
Yes.
This is not a one-time expense, though.
This is an annual cost.
You're in effect renting this stuff, right?
Correct.
So next year, it'll be twice this.
Yep. You're right.
No, because it will come due, we'll only be using it, we'd be off-cycle on when we need to pay it up.
Once the cameras are installed, for lack of a better word, you have to pay for them for twelve months.
Correct.
So it'd be, it would be for fiscal nineteen, we'd be paying for the whole year.
Right, but the first contract would basically run from January one to December thirty-one, so the new money would only kick in for six months of the year. So yes, we're paying for it for the full year, but we're stepping it. It's almost like when we...
Then what do you do about the first half of nineteen?
By then, we've rolled it into the budget into the two steps. We've rolled thirty thousand into the first budget, thirty thousand into the second budget. Now you've built the sixty thousand dollars into it. If you think back a couple of years ago, when the police department hired the extra position for the drug enforcement, we hired that person halfway through the year. So we picked up part of the cost in one fiscal year and part of the cost in the second fiscal year, and rather than having all of the impact hit in one year, you basically split it into two. But, so we're...
Same philosophy.
Same philosophy.
Is there an anticipation of any federal funds? I know that that's a crazy question in terms of the politics that's going on now and the budget and all of that, but was there an expectation for federal funds for body cameras because so many departments across the country are doing them now? And I'm just wondering what the availability is as of today. Forget about tomorrow, but as of today, whether there's an expectation, whether there was an expectation for federal funds?
There is no expectation at this point. We've researched this. This has been a two-year progress that we've been researching, the body cameras. We've looked into a federal grant that opened up, I think it was in March of this year. It's a four-million-dollar grant that goes, that's open nationwide. So the majority, those, that dollar amount is going to go to fund large agencies. Unfortunately, there are no grants out there that we know of that will fund an agency our size or even in the state of New Hampshire. You're looking at the major cities that are getting that money right now.
The department does a great job of looking at these grants, and I think they come before you often. We've done some rifles recently. We do the DEWE patrols, the distracted driving patrols. We do a bunch of those that we're working on with available funds, and then certainly, when any federal funds from Homeland Security come through the state, that's where we got some of the money for the CopSync program that we're working with the schools is through federal money that was administered by the state Homeland Security. So I want to say the department is very active in searching out the funding sources whenever possible.
Eric Adams' position and that program, and in terms of the budget, represent a continuation of what's been going on there? That still carried through in this budget?
Yes, it is. I mean, Eric continues to do good work on a daily basis. He's constantly reaching out to people, and that program will definitely continue.
Okay, any other questions from the police department?
It looks like what I'll call Recovery Court or Judge Carroll's court, even though he's retiring, I think he's going to be continuing on doing that. They're going to move it to Belknap County Superior Court, I think. But I also think there's going to be money available. Do you know anything about that? There's going to be state funding available for that program.
I haven't heard anything about state funding for it, but we'll certainly look into that if that's the case.
There is, last year's.
Because that's a good program. What Eric is doing is a good program, and I like to think it's part of the reasons that we're seeing, if not a great deduction, leveling off some of the spikes we, other parts of the state have been experiencing with respect to opioids, so...
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly a great program where these people kind of flounder, not sure where to turn to, and by making those connections when they're down during that time, making those connections at least plants a seed for getting them into programs.
Yeah. Kudos to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, any other business to come before the meeting tonight?
We wanted to have a policy discussion.
Yes, we were.
Brenda wants to have a policy discussion?
We wanted to.
I think it was on the last of January.
I remember that, but it was midnight or something.
General budget discussion. If I had known we'd be so efficient, I would have scheduled Public Works and Fire to be here tonight, too, and we could have...
Public Works Director. So you want to do it now?
Hey, that's up to, I have no say in these matters.
All right. Does anybody other than, she has no say, but does anybody else want to say? I think we wanted to have some time to...
Discuss the overall...
The overall picture.
We could certainly add it to the agenda next week. I mean, there's time available tonight. We're in a posted meeting, and if you wanted to have just a general budget discussion...
It's eight o'clock on games.
Do it tonight.
Let's do it.
All right. Who's going to lead off? Counselor Bear?
No.
He's not going to lead.
So I think the...
She's going to counterpunch.
I think that, if I could...
Counselor Littman.
So I think from a bigger-picture standpoint, we focus on preparing the budget for fiscal year eighteen. I think what we're trying to get a sense on is our collective wisdom with respect to what's over the horizon, nineteen, twenty, so on and so forth, so that as we're making a decision for the current year, how's it impact future years? What are, you know, for example, if we go back a year from today, probably a year ago, we were concerned what the state school property may have meant for the, for this budget and the next budget, whereas, you know, that issue's sort of been taken off the table, apparently, for, you know, the fact that it appears that legislation to create that commission for that property is going to come forward.
Yeah.
So that resolves that. But I guess just those are the kind of issues I think we wanted to sort of get out on the table there as we're thinking about this year, what other, you know, concerns are on the horizon.
Yeah.
Well, I guess that I've got a couple of concerns. I desperately, I desperately want the Colonial Project to be a real success. It's having some difficulties right now. I don't know what the city's role can or will be this year in order to get that financing package together and in order to break ground and open up with an adequately-equipped theater. My, that's here and now, and it's going to carry over to next year. There's going to be an issue about rental of the theater and the rental price, or at least I, I kind of get a sense that that may be part of the package that Belknap EDC is going to be looking for in terms of bridging their fundraising efforts, because right now, they're struggling to meet their market. They are struggling there. They've got, they're looking for ways to tap into grants and other sources that probably aren't going to materialize in a timeframe in which I would personally want in terms of putting the spade in the ground, because I think that once we do that, once we break ground, we're on, and we're going to build that theater, and it's going to be a huge addition to the city of Laconia. I don't know if it's going to be, do anything about the statewide slump in building houses in New Hampshire, Ed, and that's, that's part of a, that's a dire prediction, and we suppose we've got to recognize that. And secondly, I know this is not, you know, real popular at this council, and that we've avoided a tax cap crisis through some really good negotiating. Did I say really good job yet? Yes. But we cannot, we cannot continue to fund our budget at tax cap levels if we look at CPIs or CIPs at one or two percent, and that's what the predictions look like right now. I don't know what's going to happen in the future, but we can't do that. We can't do that. We can't be competitive. We can't have it, come to Laconia, invest in Laconia, bring your children, your upper mobile children, your families to Laconia, and everybody's looking at that and says, oh, that's a tax-cap city. So I predict that as an issue that we're going to have to face sooner or later, maybe not this year, but probably sooner than later. So there's my, there's my two cents.
I think you ought to drop it to one cent, because I haven't heard anything like that.
So I mean, I guess...
I knew it was a hard sell with you, Armin. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not taking that back from you at all. I understand your position, you know, I'm just putting my mind out there.
No, I do, I do think that we know what the issues are. I think that's what Brenda's trying to get at. We can identify them and work on them. I think that, you know, the example of the school situation, I think if, you know, it took a while to understand what the issues really were, but that's, I think, part of the discussion we want to get on the table. I think if we can see the issues coming at us earlier rather than later, I mean, you know, I think, you know, Armin, you've been on the council longer than anybody. We've accomplished, to my way of looking at it, more under the tax cap than we did before.
Yes.
Beforehand in terms of capital investments and things like that by anticipating and planning. And so I guess, you know, if there are, I understand the labor market's going to be an issue that's going to be challenging in a number of different areas. It's, it's not just in teachers, but I think, you know, there are other professions where you need younger people to work in them, you know, that, for example, paramedics is a area you hear concerns about in the state. But, so I guess, you know, I guess that's what we're trying to tease out here. What are those, those issues? And part of, I think, our, you know, for example, the Eric Adams position, you know, we funded a lot, part of that indirectly by the recycling program, you know? We've added fifty thousand a year in savings of roughly, I think, and, I'm not saying that went one-for-one, but I mean, those are the, you know, the lighting project we just implement's going to save thirty-five thousand dollars each year for the next five years, and then a hundred thousand for the next five after that. So it's kind of like, what are the opportunities to, to gain efficiencies that are out there that really, there was no pain in, in changing the streetlights and generating... no pain in, in changing the streetlights and generating, you know?
Well, you know, I'm in favor of all those opportunities. You know that, like, the lighting project was, how can we not do that? That would be colossally stupid, you know?
Right. I mean, I think that, and other things we can look at longer term, you know, and develop some plans around, you know, what, you know, we put, put property on the tax rolls that were, like the abandoned police station, you know, basically, that's been put in. So I guess I, I don't want to give up on trying to keep our taxes, property taxes, you know, competitive, because I think that's a competitive advantage, too, as long as we're not, you know, making the city, you know, we're going to put 10 million more in roads over the next, is it four years, is the plan, you know, stepping up our investment by, you know, more than doubling it. I mean, that's one of the things I think, you know, we're going to handle that in our budget. I don't think with much, much challenge whatsoever. I mean, you know, it's, so I guess I, let's, let's get the problems and quantify them.
I'm not, I'm not saying we should tax at a higher rate than we need to.
No, you are saying that the taxes in Laconia are too low.
I'm saying, I'm saying that the tax cap presents a developmental problem for the city of Laconia.
That's the same thing as saying the taxes in Laconia are not high enough.
Exactly.
I'm not disputing your argument at this point in time.
No, I'm not saying that.
I'm just saying that's what you're saying. We're not taxing enough.
No, I'm saying that the tax rate driven by the tax cap over the long run is not productive. I'm saying it's not productive in two ways. Number one, you don't get to take care of emergencies or situations that come up, that make them up for year to year. That doesn't mean you can throw Fugallity out the window. And it doesn't say, and it's not attractive to folks who want to, upwardly mobile folks, who you and Henry and everybody else in this council wants to attract to the city of Laconia, and they say, tax cap, I'm not coming. That's what they say.
Who's they?
I haven't heard that.
This is the first thing that you...
Who's saying that?
Well, I mean, I think the millions of people out there.
Billions of people out there.
All those.
Billion!
The only one that I can see is right there.
We've had many emergencies, David, come up every year. We have a couple more right here. We just got last week. And under the task cap, we've been able to take care of. The problem is, sometimes when a project comes up or somebody wants to do something, you forget about all the other stuff that's out there, and you're only paying attention to the one item. Oh, let's get this done. How can we do it? And you're completely forgetting that there's this, this, and this out here.
Well, I hope I'm not doing that, Brenda.
Well, there's something else out there hanging out, and it's the garage. And, you know, I don't like to get into it. I mean, I think it's an ugly building, but...
The garage.
We do, well...
Oh, the parking garage.
You've got Genesis across the street, which I think at the time that they had a lease to buy in the...
They did.
Garage building. And they stated they needed something like 160 parking places for their employees and things a day. Now, I don't know where they're going to put that 160 over there now, wherever it is, but then you have the Colonial, and if you do have a resurgence downtown, you certainly, the garage is going to figure in there.
You know, I purposely stay away from the garage since we've dealt with that issue.
What I'm saying is, don't forget, there's a lot of things out there.
I'm not, I'm not forgetting anything. You know what I think we should do with the downtown parking garage.
Oh, you haven't built anyone, yeah.
I want to tear it down.
Anybody else, but I see more traffic out here than I have ever seen. If you want to go somewhere, you've got to stop it.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of construction, too. The traffic is terrible.
Oh, there's so much traffic out there. I don't know where, where they're all going, but they're here in Laconia, and it takes quite a while to get through Union Avenue. So people are here.
It's busy, yeah.
They're not, they're not leaving. They're here.
Yeah.
But I mean, you know, so you get the parking garage. You got, I think a long-term issue is, you know, being, is that going to be wage pressures?
Retirement.
Retirement system.
Yeah, yeah.
That's...
Insurance, health insurance.
But I mean, in terms of retirement system, we now have a, once the budget is addressed, even if it isn't addressed, I think that the, the rates are good for two years.
But that's only two years.
Yeah. But on the other hand, you know, the, the investment returns in the stock market, I haven't checked today's paper, I know today was a down market, but they are getting some, some issues there. You know, but I think we, we can quantify some of these things, or what they might mean. So if pension continues to increase, how much do we have to, it was worth, like, $300,000 to the city this most recent one?
The increase?
The increase, I think it was about $200,000 across all city departments and another $300,000 to the school.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, when Brenda talks about what's over the horizon, we have to find $200,000 worth of efficiency to compensate for that. Part of that can be through the normal growth in it, but, you know, on, on health insurance, we're paying less today than we were in 2011.
Yeah.
And I, you know, I think we've done, that's an example of, you know, we could have sat here and done nothing for, you know, five or six years, and, you know, that was, you know, from day one, the manager worked on that, that issue even before day one, even before he was hired.
Well, and that, that, to, to go back to David's argument, that is, is to me exactly a major benefit of the tax cap. And, and I will say again that the tax cap is not an absolute cap. There's a provision in that tax cap that says that four of you at any time can override that tax cap.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
Okay? We haven't done it, but it's nothing legally preventing four of you at any point from saying, this year, we just can't do it, or we've got to do the parking garage, or we got to do Colonial something or other, and we just can't do that within the constraints this year. You've always got that option to you. But what I'm saying is, is prior to the tax cap, no one gave a damn about health insurance. It was just, oh, that's out of our control. I heard politician after politician, and you still hear it in the other communities, it's out of our control. We have no control over that. So they just accept it. We can't accept it.
We have to make it.
We can't accept it. And so it puts a priority from our standpoint as a city to say, we've got to be creative here. We've got to find ways to fit this in. We can't just say, oh, well, we have no control over that.
We can say that without a tax cap. We don't need a tax cap to say that.
You're right. We can, but it doesn't happen. It doesn't happen. Before I had experience, that was my perspective.
It doesn't happen here. It doesn't happen anywhere.
We've got two more issues that we haven't talked about, but they're going to be part of this budget discussion, and that's the waste management and the possibility of the ambulance fire department. They're not in our budget, but we have to think about, is it going to impact us this year? And you didn't give us a figure, but it would be interesting to know what, what the money was on the waste management.
So I should call it solid waste, because waste management was one of the companies that bid on it.
Oh, well, yeah, yeah.
So, so solid waste and recycling. As I indicated in an email to the, to the mayor and council, that we got the bids in, and we are going to, going to be seeing an increase in that cost, and it's mainly driven by the value of the aggregate recyclables. It's just falling off. China used to be a big purchaser of it. Glass in particular is a huge money loser in single-stream recycling. That's not to say it's any cheaper to throw it in the trash stream and get rid of it, but it is a, they actually break down the whole amount of recyclables, not just Laconia, but what a plant does, and they give you the percentages as to how much is aluminum, steel, glass, plastics, corrugated, other paper, sludge material. They have the whole breakdown, and they line it up, and they show you what the commodity value for each one of those items individually was over the last two years. So we want people to throw away a lot of aluminum and not a lot of, not a lot of trash, I mean, not a lot of glass. So a couple of things coming into play. I did bump up a little bit of money into the solid waste budget, not enough to cover what's come up.
Yeah.
That is a contract that does begin on October 1st.
Right.
So it's a nine-month cycle, and there is a little bit of money that's in there. We're still working through the numbers to see what the overall impact would be, but I expect it to be north of $100,000 that we probably will have to be discussing between now and budget adoption. And that's, and that's running across the country. I mean, what's driving it now is it's not just the flat rate for picking up your recyclables and the flat rate for picking up the remote dumpster locations. Now, both companies who bid, it was Casella and Waste Management, have a formula that says unless the average cost of the tonnage equals X, you, the city, will pay the difference to cover our cost of disposal and hauling. If the price is greater than X, we're allowed to split in with a share of the profit, if you will. But over the last two years, there maybe was one profitable month out of 24. So I'm not, so that definitely is an item that just has come up recently.
Yeah.
And the reason it came up is Casella had an opportunity to take a one-year extension, and because of that issue with recycling, they chose not to, knowing what they were bleeding in, in revenue on that. So...
Did they rebid as part of the?
They did. They did rebid. And again, we're comparing the bids, because there's a couple of components to it. The other thing to discuss is, is the remote recycling locations. In the past, when recycling was a flat-rate cost, we didn't look to limit maybe folks from outside of Laconia from using those.
Yeah.
I don't know how we would still look to offer, and again, we're just starting to kick ideas around, but how we would continue to offer 24-hour day, seven-week, seven-day-a-week access. And we say, open up to anybody. Now, it's almost like we don't want people from out of town where it's more convenient on their way to work. They're going to pull into one of the locations and get rid of recyclables. In the end, it may cost us more. So that's a conversation that we need to have about what we do with those, or how we monitor them.
Twice you pay as you throw.
There's things we're looking at.
Rearing its ugly head.
I'm glad you brought that up. So that's one. The ambulance one, we're still going to come, so I don't have any specifics to share with you tonight on that, but that's something that is actively on the front burner with that. And, you know, the hospitals is, is really working in the dialogue with us, and they've got their marching orders and, and...
What's the end of their contract? June?
It runs through June 30th, but we've already agreed to extend that out a month by month, so no one's going to pull the rug out from anybody. And as long as we've got some good working efforts going, we'll get to something soon. Counselor Barr, I'm glad you brought the parking garage up, because if it's not the parking garage as far as doing something with it, we're going to have to start talking about putting some money into it just for, not upgrades, just some general maintenance, doing inspections, you know, some of the leak areas, you know, some extra cleaning. Do we have to get in there and paint it? We've got a gym that's opening up there soon. We've got the other businesses you mentioned. We've got Genesis coming in. So parking, whether it's there or somewhere else, I'm hopeful that the council can start bringing back to the forefront and having conversations maybe after we adopt the budget and start talking about some options and...
Of course, TIF is a good...
Where would the money come from to do that?
Potentially in the TIF or potentially something in the next fiscal year budget. We know Genesis needs some spaces somewhere. Is there an opportunity to, you know, partner somehow, whether it's on a surface lot or something in the parking garage?
Could be charged for parking in the garage.
Whatever. So there's, there's some things we need to look at there. The state budget is still in flux, but everything that I've presented to you within our budget is conservative, and where, if something did materialize at the state, we're not hung out to dry. So there's nothing there that I'm looking at right now that says, boy, if the extra, you know, bridge and highway funding doesn't come through, we're in trouble. Or the schools aren't in trouble if some extra kindergarten money doesn't materialize, those types of things. So we're very conservative there. If we got nothing new other than what we expected for the highway block grants and the conservative rooms and meals number that we did, we're, we're good on the city side of the budget. I'm not going to come to you and say, well, this happened at the legislature. I need to find another $200,000. Federal budget, a little bit, not maybe a direct line from Washington to Laconia, but what might get passed down to the state and passed down to the local...
That's the big issue.
...city development block grants, heating oil assistance, things that you don't necessarily think would come in, Meals on Wheels, but they all find their way, you know, filtering down to the local level. So we want to, we want to be monitoring that. The county is still in, in flux right now with the delegation and opening the new facility over there or not opening the facility. Our, our county impact was flat from, from last year to where it is this year.
We thought that could be like as much as $600,000 if my recollection was right.
Sorry, missed the first part.
We thought that upon full implementation, that at one point it was as high as $600,000 of additional?
I think that if it was, if it was building a $20 million or a $30 million facility. So I think where the capital cost came down to the...
Probably $200,000.
Six or seven million. But yes, I could see a full rolling out of that. And then I think, you know, not that it's a cost item, but I think it presents opportunities, is what happens out of the, the land use chapter and the master plan and what Dean was speaking to tonight. I'm making some of those recommendations. And what does that do maybe to drive? I mean, Dean made a great point at the, at the working group meeting that, he says, you can stand in the downtown, and in one spot, you can look out and be in one zone and see two other zones in the downtown.
Yeah.
You know, and he brought that to the table. So I think you're going to see some streamlining in, in how do we get to yes more, a prudent yes, not a reckless yes for growth in the city and development in the city, but, but, but look at some options to make things a little bit easier. So those are a few things, and I agree with the efficiencies. And I'm not saying we're done, but we've squeezed just about everything we could out of recycling. We've squeezed the streetlights. There's not a lot of those game changers or $50,000 or $100,000 a year.
$1,000 rebate.
But there are...
Is it coming?
I'm sorry, I missed the first part.
Is the rebate coming, $100,000 from EverSource?
That was factored into the number that we used, so that's already...
But we haven't seen it, right?
We haven't gotten the money.
I don't think we've truly wrapped out the project with Siemens yet. I think they're still tallying everything. We had a few outliers, streetlights, and they're working with EverSource to consolidate the numbers as to what came online when. But that, we're, we're solid on that.
What kind of number are we looking at for exemptions? We do the VIPS.
The exemptions are on an April, I think it's an April 15 deadline. It could be April 1st. So that change in the law didn't happen.
So we'll go to the next budget.
Yeah, that change didn't happen. And we, I think the number I said that potentially, based on our estimates, because there's no firm number.
Yeah.
If we did the whole $500 credit for the Gap veterans, as they were referred to, I think it was $180,000 impact off the top of my head. So if that was phased in in three equal installments, that's $60,000. But that's not a cut necessarily to the budget. That's money that would be spread over the other ratepayers. So that's not, oh, we've got a couple of $60,000. That $60,000 is spread over the $10,000 property cards in the city. So everybody might pay an extra $5 or $10 a year in their property tax bill to support the expanded veterans.
That's how it's funded now.
Yes, that's how it's funded now. That's how any of the eligibility exemptions are funded now.
Yeah.
So one, one area that, you know, in terms of efficiencies, I guess, you know, I think, you know, we're, we're dabbling in regionalization in, with the fire manager. We haven't really looked at, you know, and again, these are not the types of things you can implement in six weeks kind of thing, but longer term, you know, between, for example, the schools and, and the city, you know, there's, seems to me there, there are certain areas that are worth probably looking at to see what type of gains we could have by working differently. Another area that I think we need to take a look at is kind of projections in and around the TIF districts and, you know, what they're incubating as, as money in terms of, you know...
Contribution percentage.
Contribution percentage, and, you know, what the forecast is on that. You know, for example, you know, some of the, the capital that we have to take out of the budget, you know, for example, let's say we needed in a future budget period monies for, to, to stay competitive in salaries, you know? There may be ways that we're supplanting other capital expenditures which would support, you know, a new refacing of the budget. So I mean, those are the types of things analytically, be good to have a sense of what our flexibility's going to be or not be.
You know, I, I agree that taking the long view is really what we ought to be doing.
Mike, Mike.
I'm just going.
Tie it around his neck.
Needs a lapel.
You agree that taking the long view...
Is what we ought to be doing. And Henry's exactly right in terms of looking for efficiencies and exchanges and cooperation that we can get. One of the things we might also consider is, I know we've tried it in the past, I don't know when, is there's mechanisms when we, for tax incentives that we can offer. is there's mechanisms when we, for tax incentives that we can offer to folks to come into Laconia and start a business and stuff like that.
What?
There, there, we did implement one.
Yeah, downtown meeting.
You're saying there were tax incentives?
Like, for example, added employment, we, what's that, the district call, we added that.
They're pretty limited.
They're limited, but we've got everything. We've got the ERZ zone, the Economic Vitalization Zone is in the O'Shea Industrial Park downtown and the Lakes Business Park. That helps a, a new, new business with their business profits tax and their enterprise tax. We also designated the downtown area under seventy-nine E, which means if somebody comes in and makes an investment that has a public benefit, you can freeze their assessment at the level it is before they make the improvements for a period of years to give them a chance to
Aye, the colonial.
Make the investment without raising and saying, thank you for doing that, here's a bigger tax bill. So those are two that we have, but New Hampshire is very limited and it doesn't give you local control to be creative.
But I do think that in terms of how we, the zoning and land use kind of stuff that we're trying to work on is enabling projects to go forward, is something we can, it's an efficiency that we can gain without, without pain, I think.
One of the projects Dean mentioned tonight that he anticipates being approved for the eighty, eighty-something unit residential by the planning board, I think he said at the July meeting, is in the Weir's TIF district, which is a positive toward having that grow and meet the pro forma to repaying the general fund. So if that gets approved, I have no idea at what pace they will move on, but even if it's.
There's not a line out in the street right now.
But even if it's, you know, a half a dozen houses a year, ten houses a year, you know, at a couple hundred thousand dollars, that adds a million and a half or two million dollars in construction value over the course. So if that were the pace they were building, that's a good thing.
Lakeport should see a spoon in the TIF too this year, yeah.
I think the other thing, though, that is starting to maybe happen, again, at least it's happening in other markets, is home appreciation and, and basically because of the shortage and, and new housing, the, that the realtors are talking about, you know, home prices increasing somewhat. So while that doesn't necessarily lead to lower taxes, it does, you know, potentially spread out the, the burden of the, the taxes, potentially better for the city.
The, the two words I'd like to throw into the mix are priorities or prioritization and filter. And what I mean prioritization is obvious, I guess, but what I mean by filter is, is, is looking down the road, you introduce the conversation as in every aspect of everything we touch, from land use planning and zoning to budgets and priorities and whatnot. To me, everything is, is, is going to be judged by filtered through, and it's the word filter. What do we have to do in this city to attract more middle and upper-middle-class families to live in Laconia? That to me is the absolute bottom line. And so, not literally, but almost literally, if it was just me, I would be looking through this budget saying, what does that item do to meet that goal? And that every dollar we spend theoretically would go through that filter. What is this dollar doing to attract, retain and attract middle and middle and upper-middle-class families to move to and live in Laconia? And in my mind, that, that covers a number of things, and I certainly don't have all the answers or pretend to have all the answers. But the two most obvious answers to me, one of which was on our agenda tonight, you've got to have, I'm guessing that if you came up with a list of twenty things that could significantly impact that, that goal, that the top two on the list, and which would be first and which would be second, depend, I guess, on who you talk to. But to me, the two biggest items by far on that list would be schools, reputation of schools, quality of schools, whatever you want to call it, and two, housing stock. Those two things.
How about jobs?
Are the primary, well, in the long term, yes, but we're not in Nebraska. It's not sixty miles to the nearest town. We already have the jobs here. The people who are taking the jobs just live in other towns.
That's right.
Exactly.
You know, that's target number.
You'll see that in my letter.
That's not target number one is, that's so easy for us, if they're, if the low-hanging fruit theoretically is, is we already have hundreds, if not thousands, of these families who are already employed in our city, but they live in Guilford, or they live in Meredith, or they live in Belmont or somewhere else and work in Laconia. They're already here. They already have good-paying jobs, you know.
And the teachers alone, there's a hundred and ninety-one full-time teachers.
That should be our middle class.
A hundred and forty-five live elsewhere. And I, I've written a letter, and you're going to get it tomorrow, and if they would, if they would move to Laconia and, but.
It would make a huge difference, huge difference. But in order for that to happen, we have to have the housing stock to be able to accommodate that, and right now, we do not. And we have no plans for it, nor does anywhere else in New Hampshire. It's not like we're on a, on a lonely island here, no one else does either.
That's right.
But, so. That's why we were so insistent on.
So what I'm saying in terms of priority is, is to me, we have to start thinking long-term about how do we prioritize the things that are in the city budget that will contribute to that goal as opposed, in a big way, as opposed to in a smaller way or no way at all.
I think the other aspect of it that you've said before is amenities and that go along with it. And I think, you know, for the first time in one of the community newsletters, we sort of compiled the parks and various options. But I think in terms of, of finishing the Riverwalk and, and marketing all the opportunities that there are, I mean, you know, five beaches or four beaches, five beaches in the city that are available to people and, you know, all the, the parks and, you know, different opportunities here, it's just, it's, you know, we're rich in that aspect.
Well, and that's the other thing, a lot of communities, you look across the country, and what I see from traveling is communities investing significant amounts of money in recreation. And why? Because that's what, one of the things, maybe not up there with housing and schools, but it's one of the things that attracts people to their town. You see towns building water parks, you see them building golf courses, you see them building all kinds of stuff for that exact explicit reason. They're trying to attract that same demographic that we're talking about here to their, to their cities. Please come live here, because you have to have that dynamic, it's, you know, and I.
We have golf courses, we have all of this stuff.
I'm sorry?
We have those things already.
I think part of, part of it is if you're an outsider, you have to look for it, you don't realize it's even here. Like when people are talking about, you know, maybe we need, for example, with the realtors, we need to bring them in and do some education about what there really is here and what the quality of the school is. You know, why not send your, your kid to the number one elementary school in the state of New Hampshire, you know?
One, one of the suggestions as we were going through what Shayna called charrettes, one of the suggestions is that the, and it was a pretty strong suggestion by all those in attendance, is that the city consider getting its own economic development person.
Just what?
Consider getting its own economic development person.
I, I think that when the planning department runs the way I think it's going to run under a new leadership, I think that's going to be a big part of.
And I hope it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree with that statement. I, I think, it's nothing but an opinion on my part, but I, I think, I think from the people I've talked to who were banging the drum the loudest in that direction, it was because of their frustration with the planning department.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
So, I mean, I guess what I would like maybe as a beginning point, if we could make an inventory of what we, just bullet points of the things that we've identified and try to continue to add to that on occasion, so.
Yeah, too bad Bob's not here.
Sure.
Have a list.
Do you have enough to, to do that, Mary? I know just one budget item that Council Hamill asked me to, to, to bring up tonight on the, and maybe we'll have it for next time. No, actually, probably won't, we'd have it coming into this one, is in terms of Motorcycle Week and in terms of what we're doing on the staffing front there. And, you know, on the, and maybe Ava, you have a better sense of this, you know, being in the Weir's area, but in terms of the.
Follow you.
I'm sorry. Basically, the staffing costs that, and staffing that we're going to run.
Soft costs, you mean?
No, staff, fire particularly.
Yeah, fire particularly, yeah.
Over the Motorcycle Week that, in terms of the overnight period, and I'm not sure where we are this year versus where we are. And I don't know if this is correct, but typically on a typical night, we're running three firemen in, in Lake, I mean, in the Weir's.
Normal staffing, it would be three, yes.
And then we run six during Motorcycle Week twenty-four-seven, is that correct?
I think it depends on the night and the weather forecast, and I think it maybe doesn't run all night, but we try to run at least a dedicated ambulance out of the Weir's, so I don't think there's a hard number where it's always six twenty-four hours a day, but I think depending on weather and depending on time of day.
I guess the, the question is in terms of how, what, from step, going up to the sixes, if that's what we do, is, you know, are there more opportunities based on how the, the weather, as you say, and how the event is running in terms of, you know, a cold rainy night, nobody's down there, it's, it's less than.
I work with both chiefs every year since I've been here to talk about, you know, staffing levels and making reductions if the conditions don't warrant it. So just because they go in with a plan that it's going to be X number when they're doing that, when they're putting together a schedule in January, doesn't mean that we're not monitoring it and making adjustments to it as the event unfolds.
But I can assure you on like Friday or Saturday, if the weather's nice, the, there is an ambulance going through probably every, at least every hour, you know, going, fire, either a fire truck or police cars heading somewhere.
Yeah, the beginning of the week's forecast has some very hot weather, right?
And it could be, those week, that first weekend is the same way, though. And then if it's a really nice evening on a busy Friday night or Saturday night or whatever, you're going to see the same thing at ten, ten, eleven, twelve, one o'clock in the morning.
So we, we do monitor it and we discuss it daily about where we're at and what we're looking at as the, as the week progresses.
What else do you have?
I don't know.
You don't know?
Well, I think we're sort of brainstorming here, right? I mean, I don't.
There'll be something.
I, I mean, the federal budget, I think, is the, the big wildcard here because as, as much as, I mean, when the, for example, on the ACA and repeal and replace and all that, you know, the, the, for example, the schools would be affected by, in the state would be affected by eight and a half million based on Medicaid cuts. Our welfare budget could be affected significantly, you know, if people lose coverage or a lot, you know, the types of cuts that they're talking about in housing, you know. For example, a lot of the voucher, people that are, you know, in housing because of vouchers, HUD does away with different things like that. But, I mean, that's to me, if the state takes a, you know, out of eleven billion dollar budget in the state, or almost twelve billion, a third of that is.
Federal money.
Is met, no, a, a third of it is, is Health and Human Services, and they're talking about, you know, twenty-five and thirty percent cuts as, as proposed. I mean, it doesn't appear at the moment that those are, are coming through, but if, you know, momentum develops over the course, after we pass our budget, is, you know, the federal government's going to be continuing to work on theirs. I mean, there's a chance they won't come up with any budget, right? We'll just be operating under a continuing resolution, but if there's a major change in funding to the state, that's going to, you know, it runs.
Trickle now, yeah.
You know how they solve previous crises, eliminate, matching, you know, put the pension on.
Downshifting.
Downshifting, so downshifting, I think, is the, the bullet point maybe, Mary, that.
Yeah.
That, you know, we have to.
We have to get our reps to.
I mean, this, at, at the end of the day, you know, they kind of view it as, when you're down in Concord, you're part of that team, you know what I'm saying? That's the way it.
Yeah, yeah.
I move with you, Julie.
I'll support that.
Councilor Bolduc moves with Jurn.